Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our May 6th Select Board Meeting. I'll call this meeting to order at 7 o'clock. If everyone could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with public comment. Per the Select Board Policy, public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the Select Board. It is the citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of town business. The Board may respond to a public comment by taking it under consideration when deliberating on an agenda item or referring the item to the administration for appropriate action or response. Public comment shall be for a period of up to 15 minutes and with speakers being allowed three minutes to present their material. Is anyone here for public comment? All right. Then I will ask Jim Stanford, the Director of Public Works, and John Borgesi to come up and talk to us about paving, which is very exciting.
We don't get that at all.
Well, I'm very excited about it.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Jim Stanford, Public Works Director. I'm joined by John Borgesi, Assistant Director, Town Engineer, and Employee of the Year.
Thank you.
You just thought he'd just throw that in.
Yeah, I know, I know.
It lasts a whole year, John.
Take it while I cut.
I have to introduce you.
I know, exactly. I had that in.
I'm going to take that tomorrow. I do have a presentation here. As mentioned, we're here to give an update on the roads program, talk about how we go about selecting roads, and John, then we'll talk about the actual program itself. I do have a memo that's in your packet. The presentation should follow it somewhat. Before I actually get going with it, I know there's been a lot of discussion. Everybody's obviously aware of the budget challenges we face right now. Just wanted to state before I get into the presentation, we're not cutting out any roads program. Most of it is funded through the state, Chapter 90. So we will have to make cuts in Public Works, but we're doing it more on the maintenance side. It won't impact any of our roads projects. That's probably the biggest question we've gotten over the past few weeks, so.
But you're not going to cut back on the plowing machine.
I hope we don't have to do any more plowing.
It's only going to last for next year.
Well, I used to laugh. It could rain all winter. I feel differently about that. So we've had enough rain. With that said, I'll just get right into the presentation. In overview, we're going to go over the pavement management system. That's how we actually select our roads for improvement. I'm going to talk a little bit about the budget and our funding for the program. I want to get into the current road conditions, where we, the status right now. And then I want to talk a little bit about our program challenges, and then John will give an update on the major road projects that we have scheduled for this year. At any time, feel free to interrupt me. If you see something on the slides, there is a lot of information. I'm going to try and go through it very quickly. As far as our pavement management system, this is actually how we track all of our roads programs, all of the status of all the roads. Essentially, it's been in place now for over 10 years, so it's probably even a little longer than that. The goal of the system is actually to obtain the best value for our limited resources. And I think we've been pretty successful in doing that, and I'll explain a little bit more about the program itself. It is a software program, but it also needs a lot of input from us as well as our staff when they actually look at the roads themselves. It is a planning and budget tool. I mean, it's a software program. It's only as good as the inputs that go into it. It's one of the tools we use. Again, we use a lot of our own experience when we're deciding what roads we're doing. We look at them every single year. The evaluation of all the local roads. We just completed a major update to the system. Essentially, we had our consultant go out and look at every mile of roadway. And we put that into the system, so we have updated status of every road. We also updated the unit cost. Unfortunately, over the past five to 10 years, we've seen an incredible increase in cost. Pavement, which is a petroleum product, has really, it's stabilized as of late, but again, the increases have already been in there. And the other important thing to mention about our pavement management system, it is an objective, we use an objective criteria on how we determine what roads are selected. It's no longer, you know, a lot of communities, just subjective. It's, you know, I want this road done, I want that road done. We let the management system give it its best recommendation, and it uses objective criteria, size of the road, the cost. We have a limited budget, and it can run all different scenarios. But again, it's just one tool that we do use. I think you may have heard me say that we vary a little bit from the pavement management recommendation when we talk about a neighborhood approach, which is really what we did when we were talking about the gas restoration area. We don't really like to see it go into an area, do a main road, and then not pick up any of the spur roads along the way, if we have the budget to do it. So, and again, that's the in-house expertise, and we really look to get that neighborhood approach done. It's worked out pretty well, but it does go against a little bit of the recommendations of the system. Again, the system doesn't really care how many houses are on a road. They don't care if they're big houses, little houses. It's just an objective. But it also, one of the downsides is it'll tell you to do, you know, a reclaim across town and then a reclaim on the other part of town, which, from our perspective, you're not getting the best value. So we always have to look at it, but it is, it's probably the most objective criteria we can have. Another part to it is we really have to coordinate the work with ongoing projects. The gas restoration area, that took up the majority of our time over the past five years. And again, we didn't want to, not every road in the gas restoration area was included in the funding. There were a number of adjacent roads that really needed to be upgraded. We took the opportunity where we're there, so we supplemented the gas funds with our own local roads program. So that's some of the coordination that we do. We also look at development projects, and we look a lot at what we have for grant funding as well as other ongoing projects, which I'll talk about a little bit in a little while. This is actually a snapshot from our pavement management system. I think that's Grape Pond Road. If you can see the dots, essentially, about every 10 foot, every 10 feet, we have a snapshot when the analysis was done. So it helps us evaluate, we get a lot of calls on a weekly basis, and so we'll go to the system and make sure that what somebody is telling us from a subdivision or what they're seeing, if it actually is in, we have a record of it. So it's a useful tool in that regards, and it's something that's new. We just, we had this done over the last year, year and a half, and it's pretty comprehensive.
Jim, how often are those pictures taken? Does it vary from place to place, or is there a regular plan?
It looks like it's pretty, it's pretty regular. When they pitched it to us, it was about every 10 feet. I'm looking at it right now. I guess it really depends on where the truck was driving.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, is it, do you take a picture in the spring and then one in the summer, or is it, you know, is it once a year?
Oh, no, this was a one-time thing. This was a one-time thing. It's quite expensive, but the technology has improved, and we'll probably, we'll probably do it again in the future. One of the things we used to do, we tried to do 25% of the roads, just an analysis every year. That way, over a four-year period, you're getting, you know, you're getting the full snapshot of the roads. But we took the opportunity to do this comprehensive.
It's not like a resident calls, and then you're all saying, yep, okay, I see the same thing, because there's always going to be a lag.
Oh, there always is. And again, it doesn't stop us from going out and actually looking at the conditions. But it is, it's just a tool a lot of times. It does, it is helpful when we're looking at this. Talk a little bit about the budget. We spend approximately $1.2 million a year. That's actually broken out, we have approximately $800,000 of state Chapter 90 funding. We also supplement with an annual appropriation at town meeting for $400,000. I will say, I think this is unique. A lot of, a lot of communities, their entire roads program is the Chapter 90 funding. It is, it does, it really looks at, the amount that we get is really based on the amount of accepted roadways we have, which I'm going to talk a little bit about in a minute. We also supplement with grants. I mean, we've had three Mass Works grants. We have Complete Streets grant that John's going to speak about, and we have, we have Opera Funds, more for utility work, but that will include some of the road, some of the roadwork as well. So it is, so we do get more than $1.2 million when you total everything up. We also, we also supplement this with our individual budget accounts, whereas, you know, we have, we have labor. DPW staff is going out constantly filling potholes, so those aren't representative. Really, the $1.2 million are the major road maintenance projects. I don't know if you can see this, but this is actually state Chapter 90 funding over the last 25 years. The state actually just did a press release of how much every town is getting in 2025, fiscal year. And it's, again, it's still at about the $800,000. Right now, we're about 809, I think they're, they're projecting for next year, or fiscal year '25. I think this is an important slide, because if you look at it, over the last 12 years, we've primarily gotten about $800,000, a little bit more. And there was one year, 2015, where it did jump up. I don't know if that was a special appropriation. I think this is important, because when you look at it, funding has pretty much been the same. It has been the same. Whereas, we know costs have gone up substantially in that timeframe. If we want to look at actual road conditions right now, we have 149, almost 150 miles of roadway, local roads. This is excluding Route 125, 114, any of the state roads. It contains collector roads, like Grape Pond Road. It includes local roads. 125 miles of this is accepted by the town, essentially at town meeting. There've been petitions over the years to accept blocks of roads, sections of roadways. So, in fact, I think we have a couple up at town meeting coming up this year, as a matter of fact. And I can talk a little bit more about the acceptance, because it does play in, it's a, it's a pretty important factor when you talk about your Chapter 90 apportionment. It really is based on those mileage. We also have about 24 miles of unacceptable roadways. I mentioned in the memo that these are typically what you would see on a subdivision, that actually the developer never actually brought it before town meeting. So they built the roads, maybe various status of roads, sold the lots, sold the houses. The woodwork is bonded. The problem is, is over the last 30 years, what was a bond 30 years ago is not sufficient now to finish the roadway. But I should have mentioned that it's not just developer roads. We have lots of roads in town that, that have been in existence for hundreds of years. It just never went through the process. One of the things we're working on, we've worked with planning, we want to, we want to do some block acceptances at town meeting. Essentially, any, any of those 24 miles of roadway, the majority of them, we would like to see them accepted. So, and ideally, that would increase our apportionment of Chapter 90. But we also have to weigh whether or not, is it, are, are we, are we taking on too much responsibility? And it's a tricky situation, because we plow all these roads. Most of them were, they were deemed as emergency ways, which allowed us, even though we didn't own it, to plow them. We perform basic maintenance, you know, we fill potholes. And because we can't use Chapter 90 funds on them, and my understanding is that $400,000 local appropriation was actually, is put in the budget to address some of these roadways. So this is, it's not a simple task. Again, we're talking about roads that have been around a long time, just never accepted. We have to go through them and really make sure we know what we're recommending for When we talk about road conditions, and I know you get a lot of calls, especially this time of year with potholes, and this is probably the worst time of year for, for roadways. And the roads themselves are in, we break them up into different categories. The first category is do nothing. Essentially, if the road has been repaved within the last four years, it goes into this category. The next category is routine or preventative maintenance. With that, that's generally after five years, five to 10 years, you start seeing cracks in the road. You may have a pothole, you may have some drainage issues. So this is really where we find, where we spend our local, local funds, department funds, not the $400,000, but whatever's in the DPW budget. And it includes cleaning out drainage basins, it includes cutting trees, swale maintenance. The next one is overlay. So when the roads start to deteriorate to a point where, you know what, a little bit of patching doesn't work, we put it into the overlay. When it starts getting a little bit worse, then you're actually milling. We just did a, a number of streets milling as part of the gas restoration area. In fact, I think they mill, right now, the surface is milled. And then if it deteriorates to a really bad condition, you have to reclaim it. So these are the, obviously, we want to see things in the do-nothing. And I can talk a little bit about, actually, what I have here is a typical pavement deterioration curve. And the way I usually explain this is it's like painting a house. You paint your house, eventually, you have to do a little bit of maintenance, and it only has a finite lifespan before you have to paint it again. Roads are no different. So with a road, they deteriorate very slowly, ideally at the beginning, first five to 10 years. And then, as you see, this curve really drop off as it gets steeper and steeper, it goes into a different level of repair category. And the condition of it goes down as well. Now, the overlay, when it gets to an overlay, where it needs an overlay, if you don't do it, it's a matter of time before it goes into a milling overlay, and then it goes into a reclaiming overlay if you can't attack it. So it's really the overlay, the milling overlay, and the reclaiming overlay that are the substantial When we actually look at our condition of all our roadways, and I think this is one of the most important slides that we have tonight, you can see we have 19 miles of do-nothing. Essentially, those are roads that we've paved within the last four years. I did account for the 15 miles of roadway in the gas restoration area, which is, it's a double-edged sword, because we certainly could have done without that project or without that problem that the gas company created. But ultimately, it accounts for the vast majority of our roads that are going to be in good condition. The routine, anything within the routine preventative maintenance, we have 36 miles. Again, those are roads that we've paved with that $1.2 million that you, over the last 10 years or so. And then, it's when we get into the overlay, the milling overlay, when you start to see a substantial increase as to how, to how many of those roads are within the, those repair categories. The numbers, the estimated cost with each one of those categories, when you look at the $870,000 of the routine preventative maintenance, again, these are based on average cost. We don't, you know, it's, the system looks at it based on the deterioration curve that I just showed, as well as unit cost. That doesn't mean that every road that's in the routine of preventative maintenance needs substantial. It could just be pothole patching, it could be trees, could be anything along those lines. So that, those first two categories are really where we want to see our roads. When we start getting into the overlay, it's, it's expensive. And then, as same as the milling overlay and then the reclaiming overlay. Ultimately, the, the system, the pavement management system would say we have a $40 million backlog of roadwork. And again, those are based on average cost. Every road's going to be different. Roads are wider than others, they need varying. This is really based on the pavement and basic drainage work that you would do with any roadway. To make it a little bit easier, this is a slide I've used many times over the years. It essentially takes that table data and puts it into a biograph. And what you really want to see is, we want to see these yellow and blue bires go higher, and we want to see the last three go smaller. Unfortunately, with, when you, when you look at the backlog that we have, and you look at the cost of what, what actual construction costs are now, it's very difficult for us to get any ground based on the current budget.
Jim, if I'm understanding this kind of correctly, tell me this is the right way to think about this. When we go from, you know, routine maintenance roadway to overlay, you're looking at almost a tenfold increase in unit costs, right? And then, it looks like a doubling when you go add the mill, and then, is it quadrupling when you get the reclaim?
Yeah, it's substantial. We've used, I could give a good reference relative to the gas restoration area. Essentially, we had, I think, $750,000 a mile to repair all the 15 miles. So if you were to break it out, again, some roads needed milling overlay, some needed more than that. When we started negotiating, we figured about $1 million a mile. And essentially, to do the reclaim and overlay, that's on the, that's generally what you would look at. If you look at an overlay, excuse me, you're probably talking $300,000 to $400,000 a mile.
So a dollar of overlay, if you're able to do it at the overlay level, saves you $4 in deferred maintenance?
Absolutely. And the problem here is, again, if you're not, if you're losing ground, the other, excuse me, one of the problems that is always difficult in these roads program is, at some point, you have to start spending money on overlays, which means that you're doing roads that are, let's say, have already been paved in the last 15 or 20 years. And when you have roads that haven't been paved in 30 years, that is very difficult from a, from a resident perspective. When you explain it to them, they can understand it, but those are policy decisions we really haven't gotten to yet, because we, we've had such a backlog for so long, we're always paving roads that haven't been paved. This past four years with the gas restoration, our entire focus has been on that. And it is a double-edged sword, because based on the amount of funds that we got from the gas company, we did a better-than-average repair. It wasn't, you know, we had, we fixed curbing, we fixed drainage, we added sidewalks. And so we're, we're going to benefit from that in the long run. And, and the other aspect of it is, there are probably roads in there, I know there are, that would have never been triggered by the pavement management system. So, yeah, it's, these are policy decisions that we'll probably have to start the conversations, because it does take a lot of discussion with residents, so they understand you want to maintain the roads in good condition, because then you want to extend the life of them.
Is it possible for a road to move with some work from overlay up to routine maintenance or probably not do nothing? Like, I guess, where are we best to spend our money to fix the 12.2 million in reclaim and overlay and get them taken care of, or to move the, you know, some of the lesser categories up?
It's a great question. It's one that I've had to wrestle with for the last 35 years, to be honest with you.
Come on, let's see.
You're always, you're always, and that's why the pavement management system is great. I could put in, I could put in different scenarios. Say, spend $400,000 on overlays, put $600,000 towards milling overlay, and then put the rest towards reclaiming. And then it's going to tell me the best one. But now you're, you're, you're doing the various scenarios, and now you're getting into the expertise of what makes sense. That's why you still need John.
So we have the dynamic.
Because he's going to turn around, he's going to fight with the computer and say, no, I'm, I'm getting, there's just too many problems. We have problems plowing certain roads. But that's the struggle of it. It really is.
It's like almost, yeah, okay.
And it's a balance.
There's a lot of ways to think about that.
You know, the other, the other thing that we, I've struggled with throughout my career is, you don't want to put all your money in one area of town. You want to spread it out.
You have to.
And, you know, and again, it kind of goes against, you lose a little bit of efficiency there. I could tell you that we got very good efficiency in our bids with the gas restoration.
Yeah, of course.
Because it's all in one area, the mobilization was in one area. But by the same token, the inflation over the past four years has been incredible, and, which means you have to do more with less. But that's the struggle, that, those are, those are some of the challenges that I was actually going to talk about.
Yeah, and it's not as simple as saying, well, we can do three times the amount of roads at, with, for 2, for 75% of the cost by overlaying everything, because at some point, you still have to deal with the reclaim and overlay.
Absolutely. There is, I can tell you, and I've, I've had this talk so many times over my career, is that, to be honest, once a road gets into the reclaim and overlay, it's not going to get much worse. And unfortunately, and you hate to say that, it's, you know, but then...
Where's the indoor street?
Like, all of this, though, is then we're spending good money just trying to fill potholes, and it's a Band-Aid approach, which is, which is horrible from our standpoint. So, yeah, those are the, those are the struggles. So we want to see that reclaim and overlay go down. And again, this is based on the computer's analysis. We actually go out there, and there are plenty of times where we're not going to do a reclaim. One of the downfalls of the, of the pavement management system is it breaks a road, one road into 100 different segments based on condition. And it's not efficient to go in, if you're doing the road like Grape Pond Road, where, okay, we're going to reclaim 100 feet, then we're just going to overlay, and then it just doesn't, the computer doesn't know any, it's just looking at segments and...
And then you have to make good choices.
Yeah, and we've had to do that throughout the gas restoration. We've made a lot of trying to spread it, you know, make those dollars last. I will say with the gas restoration is that when we, when we talked about that project, when it was first, when we had the settlement, it was determined every dollar was going to go in that, those neighborhoods that suffered the impact. And I think that was a good decision, because we should get longevity out of all those roads, because we were able to do a little bit better than what we would typically have funding to do.
I have one comment. It's almost a joke, but it really isn't. I think I changed the title "do nothing." If you live on a do-nothing, they're not going to be very happy. I live on the do-nothing street.
No, I think it's great. I'd love to live on a do-nothing.
Believe me, if you live on one, you're going to be happy.
Be happy.
But your point well taken, and I think I probably, I don't think our pavement management system actually says that.
No, that was, that was a you.
There we go.
That was one of my inputs. But duly noted, we'll modify that.
Ideal condition.
Yeah, I like that one. In good shape. Yeah, something.
Budget constraints, obviously.
Yeah, I understand. But it did strike me like, a do-nothing street, what's that mean?
So we do have budget constraints, obviously. $1.2 million. And we're not able to do as much roadwork. We're not, we're not reducing the amount of backlog at $1.2 million. And, and again, this would be, in order for us to change that, we'd have to, it would have to be a major funding, because even if you were to take a million dollars extra, we're not really attacking. It's just not enough. But there are other considerations, too, so we're not making any recommendation, increase funding. And again, we do think that the maju, well, obviously, the majority of the roads funding has been through the state. And, you know, we would certainly like to see that funding increase. And, you know, we would certainly like to see that funding increase. They are, it just came out, they've got a number of grant programs, we're going to continue to be aggressive. Planning Department and Andrew Shapiro have been very aggressive at getting us grant funding. So we've got to use everything we can to increase those funding. As I said, increase cost, it's not just material. Again, the biggest cost is the asphalt, it's a patrolling project, product, so you, you just, we all know what we're paying for gas. So that in itself has escalated. I think it has come down a little bit over the last year or two. I, I shouldn't say it's come down, it's more stabilized, doesn't have drastic increases. The way the state, we have to bid, they actually allow for an escalation, and it really takes a lot to escalate the price. It really has to be a major change. But labor costs have not gone down, those are continuing to increase. And diesel fuel, I mean, 35 years ago, I can tell you, we were paying less for diesel fuel than ordinary regular fuel. And now it's, you know, diesel, which is heavy construction, it's expensive. Ongoing utility upgrades, here's the other problem. Now, we have a $40 million backlog, even if you could write a check for $40 million, we couldn't do that much work. I mean, we were taxed with getting five miles essentially done between our roads program on an annual basis and the gas restoration. So that's not even possible. The other thing is, we have so many utility upgrades we're going to be doing. As you know, you've approved ARPA funding, so we have a number of sewer projects that we'll be undertaking, we have some water projects that are undertaking. So you don't want to start paving roads and then, oh, lo and behold, we're going to dig them up. That is not an efficient way to do it. So we need to think about all this. We, we know what projects we were planning over the next few years. The other aspect is the gas company. One of the things, I think, through the gas emergency, the state changed a little bit of the oversight. We obviously have a different company doing the, it's no longer Columbia Gas. Eversource came in, and they have different protocols for how they deal with things. One of the things we've seen is, there are different levels of gas leaks on every gas system. They are going after, rather than just waiting for it to become a bigger problem, which means that, on a lot of times, like our paving of Chestnut Street last year, we were going full forward, and they decided they had to remove some, replace some gas manes.
Which we thoroughly appreciate.
Nah, which is good.
And, and we should be happy, because you figure between the work that they did as part of the gas emergency, and the other work that they've got planned, and we're trying to coordinate a little bit better. That was really one that, and again, from Eversource's perspective, it's, it's a newer company. They're coming into this over the last few years, and they're trying to, to look at the town, and every town, a little bit differently. So that's a good thing. There'll be more of that, though. So again, we don't want to, we don't want to just, we couldn't recommend moving forward and paving everything, even if you could write the check.
Do you ever put moratoriums in place on pavement breaking for private projects?
One, and that's one of the policy decisions, historically, we've said three years. I think that's in just our standard operating procedures. We had talked about after the gas restoration is, we may want to move that up to five years. But the reality is, the gas, if the gas company has a leak, they're coming in and they're digging into the new road. And I can't just blame it on them, we have water main breaks. And so, we hate to see it, but it happens, it's a reality when you have underground utilities.
Did you say there was different levels of gas leaks?
There are.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Some of them are just, it smells gas. I mean, and they could, you know, they could talk at length about what that is. And we've had a, we've had an education over the last five years that we, so, yeah, but they're, again, they're taking a little bit different approach on their long-term planning, which we appreciate. Again, because we're doing the same thing with our water and sewer utility. The other big project that we have ongoing is our culvert inventory in condition. I will say that the town, and again, the roads program predates John Arai, it's been in place for quite a while now. One of the things I think the town has, has not spent a lot of attention to is the drainage system. Culverts specifically. And we could talk about flood, I'd probably spend a whole meeting on flooding, which I'd be more than happy to talk about. This is really the condition of the culverts. It's not whether it has sufficient capacity, it's really, we're going through and we're evaluating every culvert in town. Unfortunately, in the 70s and 80s, it was a great product, it was called CMP corrugated metal pipe, which was lightweight, it's, every developer used it, every municipality did it. The problem is, is it rust. And you have all of these culverts that will fail at the same time. So we're trying to be proactive about that. We should, hopefully, we'll have that done within the next six months or so. But we know that's going to include additional capital to improve culverts.
Are there grant programs specifically?
There are, it's mostly for, the grants are mostly for bridges. And that's, that's the other trick. We only have a few registered bridges in town that are town-owned. But if a culvert is, spans, if you have multiple culverts spanned so far apart, you can actually get them classified as a bridge, and then enter into the bridge program. We do have some culvert work that's already in our CIP. Culverts are very expensive, environmental regulations, for the most part, you're talking about cutting and replacing with either concrete or plastic. We've been pretty successful over the past year. We just recently did a, a lining of a culvert, and it went pretty well. You know, so we're going to advocate those sort of things, but there are trade-offs with that. And conservation certainly has input on that as well. But we do think that there are some other technologies that we'd like to investigate, but let's see once we have the culvert inventory in condition done. Flooding and drainage, I mean, and here's the thing with the flooding, and I, and again, this, and I have to answer questions about this all the time. The first reaction is always, well, the culverts are too small, which may be the case for current conditions, but you have to remember, most of these culverts were old dirt, put in old dirt roads long before there was development. And so, the purpose of it is to convey water from one side of the road to the other. And for the most part, it's doing that, unless it's, unless it's actually causing a problem similar to what we had on Waverly Road, where it's impacting the roadway, it's really not a town flooding concern. With that said, obviously, we're concerned about flooding throughout town, when residents are getting impacted by this sort of thing. However, we can't, it would be impractical for us to go in and just upsize every culvert. I think it would be great, get the water out of town quicker, but then you would have negative environmental impact. So there's always that balance. The other big thing with the flooding is, we're seeing all kinds of beaver activity. That I could probably speak to on a whole meeting as well. You know, the state actually introduced beavers into the state, and they're causing problems. We actually, we're fortunate, we have in-house DPW members who are licensed to remove beavers, and we're pretty aggressive with it, we really are. And you have to be, because they are, they cause quite a bit of damage. It's not just with the backing up, but when dams are breached, it causes issues with our culverts. So we have a lot of flooding, and we're actually looking at doing studies of drainage and flooding around town, that'll probably be within the next year, we're hoping to get some grant funds for that as well. So it is, again, but we're looking at it from a different standpoint, I'm looking at it just from maintaining the roadways. With that said, I think I'll turn it over to John, and he can talk about the actual projects themselves.
He can go to the next slide, that's right. All right. So, as everyone's likely aware, the Complete Streets project that we received, Complete Streets grant, and we also supplemented the funding with some of the ARPA, was the Sutton High Chadwick, which started on April 16th, if you haven't driven by, I'm sure everyone has. So Tasco Construction estimates that there'll be, should be completely done by July 2024. You know, the, the project itself, you know, essentially was to make it safer for both, mostly the pedestrians, but pedestrians and the vehicular traffic, because everyone knows that section of Chadwick coming up the hill, there was no stop, it was essentially a raceway. And it was never good, because there, we were introducing pedestrians, too, so it was one I always cringed about. So, with this project, you know, we essentially are eliminating that raceway of Chadwick and, and kind of turning it more into the typical kind of T intersection. You'd have to slow down and take the right onto High Street, which makes it safer for the pedestrians, too, who, because there are a lot of, a lot of kids, apparently, who are crossing in that area, who walk to school, is what I've been told. So, all in all, I think it's a, a great project, looking forward to it being done. But, yeah, so, so far, haven't had many complaints, any complaints, actually, you know? So all in all, I think that's a, a good one. Gas restoration. So, we're in the, the final stage here, the Contract 3, 4, 5 construction. I, I will add one update. So, Contract 2, we actually just completed the tree replanting. So 120 trees were put back in the Contract 2 area, which is essentially what we, we said we, we tried to do, and we did. They actually just finished Cassidy Landscaping, our, our subconsultant finished last week installing the last of the trees. You know, I think, all in all, the program went really well, the tree replanting, we had a lot of residents reach out to us ahead of time, warning trees, we had the residents reaching out, I don't want a tree. You know, we, we tried to, to accommodate everyone, you know, and, and I think we came up with a, a really good plan. Staff in-house, using John Lavin as, as our tree expert, and, and my staff engineer came up with the program. All in all, it worked really well. And minor, minor complaints here or there, you know, why'd you put the tree in front of my house type deal, or, you know? The unfortunate is, some places, it was just too narrow, and the utilities, we couldn't put a tree where a resident wanted, but we did try to get it nearby as close as we could. So, I just wanted to mention the Contract 2 update on those trees. So, Contract 3, 4, 5, you know, we started that last fall. We were actually able to, last fall, we did the Salt and Stall Cabot Area upgrade. You know, we, we also, and I'll mention this a little later on, the Waverly Road, specifically in front of the Thompson School, we were able to complete that. Our contractor, who's been the same contractor, I think, for all of them, actually, all of the contracts, PJ Albert's done an outstanding job, we work well together, they're very responsive to us and to the residents. So they started this year, April 1st. You know, they've already sloped granite and paved sidewalks have been done all along Middlesex, as we said we were going to do. May 1st, they started the milling. I have a list, there's about 15 streets that have been milled, and a couple that are, they're continuing with the milling right now. With the anticipated paving, either, I think next week's a little ambitious, I think it'll likely be the, the following week. So my guess is, especially with the weather we're expecting at the end of this week, probably the week of May 20th, is when those roads, you'll see, all be repaved. Waverly Road, so this is one, if the, the board remembers, we presented, I want to say it was in 2022, a Waverly Road concept, all of Waverly Road. We kind of broke it up into phases, anticipating costs, and, you know, we were concerned about having enough funds to do what was projected. So the first phase is what I mentioned, Thompson School, which I think came out great. We essentially was able, we were able to create on-street parking, kind of move the sidewalk, put the parking where the, the parents park anyways, you know, to kind of pick up, you know? So, all in all, I think that came out great. I know the principal was very happy, we resurfaced the sidewalks, we increased the pedestrian safety, the crossing safety on that major crossing on Waverly Road also, by doing bump outs, which I know everyone hates bump outs, but they do slow the traffic down, and they also help create that area for that off-street parking. So the next phase of the, the Waverly Road update is the Maple-Waverly Road intersection. Sure, anyone who's driven that, it's, it's one of those where you, you just say a prayer, because you're kind of, the elevation, it's, it's a little challenging. You know, so, we're, we're hopeful, we actually have a concept on that. We're looking to have PJ Albert start mid-August. We do, we're working with the gas company. The project entails essentially lowering a section of Maple Ave, two feet, bringing up Waverly Road a foot to, to, you know, kind of split that difference, try and make it, exactly.
That's steep.
Yeah. So, so with the lowering of Maple Ave, we just need to, the gas company needs to make sure that there's sufficient cover over their utility. So they're actually investigating that right now, and if necessary, they're going to lower their gas main, hopefully they don't have to, because that helps us schedule-wise, so PJ Albert can move forward with that. The, the big thing that you're going to see, the big difference, you know, besides trying to, you know, make the best of that elevation, is that crossing. So today, it's about 80 feet in that top screen, the width of that crossing. In the proposed conditions, when all is said and done, we're reducing that to about 35 feet.
That's great.
You know, much, much safer for the pedestrians. We're also, for the vehicles, you know, obviously, 80 feet, it's a sea of asphalt that's there today, you know? So we're channelizing it, and, you know, making it safer for people coming down First Street, so now you know who stops, who doesn't, because that's one of those guesses, if you're coming down Maple and, and First. So, yeah, we're, we're excited about this phase of Waverly Road. Mifflin Drive. So, Mifflin Drive, I'm sure anyone who's driven it is, is probably one of the widest paved streets in town, it's 36 feet width paved, I believe. So with that, you know, residents had reached out, I want to say, at least a year ago, I think we, we walked that, with the request to look at, it is fairly flat, so it would be a good candidate for a sidewalk. So one of the things we, we looked at is a conceptual design for a new sidewalk all along the length of Mifflin Drive. It's approximately 1,600 feet long, we looked at a five-foot wide sidewalk with a five-foot grass strip, and then curving. And we were hoping to roll this in as part of the gas restoration activities, because Mifflin Drive is actually, a portion of it was part of the gas settlement. So we came up with the, the conceptual, we actually held a, a public meeting on April 16th, we sent out notices to all the residents in the neighborhood. It was a pretty good showing, I think, on that night. We had, I want to say like 20 or so residents had showed up. We kind of went over the, the scheme. There were questions with regards to drainage, you know, what's going to happen with the drainage, was it going to be on both sides? We're actually only proposing it on, on one side, to, to help with drainage, not creating drainage problems, that's why we chose the side that we did. There were subsequent meetings with local residents, some couldn't make it, so they reached out to us. My project engineer Curtis met with them individually, or I think Jim may have been out, meeting with them also. You know, a lot of discussions, looking for potential compromise. I know some residents were, we were proposing vertical granite, some, of course, were concerned with it vertical, you know, if you hit it at all, the concern with the tire. So we did look at, and I, I think we, we were amenable to swapping out the vertical with the sloped granite, similar to what's on Middlesex Street. There were other residents who, who were against it, just didn't want to see it, you know, and, and they had their reasons, we actually... actually met with the town manager, and we all discussed, had them come in. They gave us their reasons. So, essentially, what came out of that meeting is, we decided that we're gonna actually send out a poll to that neighborhood, to try and get the feedback, you know, especially because some of the residents who couldn't make it, you know, or, you know, for whatever reason, at least that way we can hear their opinions, kind of take their feedback, and then ultimately come up with a, a final plan, you know, based on, on all the input, the good, the bad, you know, yes, no, and hopefully come up with a compromise.
So, some residents want nothing done?
Correct.
Pavement of the road, not, no sidewalk?
No sidewalk. Yeah, no, no sidewalk.
Yeah, from our perspective, again, reducing the pavement width has a lot of advantages.
Should control speed more, yeah.
Yeah, it's, and then including a sidewalk, I mean, it's, I mean, that's a priority.
It is.
But again, everybody has, it's in front of their house, and, so those are one of the things that we're trying to, you know, mitigate. Again, but it does have some definite long-term advantages, if we can reduce that pavement width.
In the annual roads program for FY 2024, so, we started last year with our 2024 annual roads program. As everyone is likely knows, I've been, there've been calls on Grape Pond Road repeatedly. Unfortunately, because of the length of Grape Pond Road, I actually had to save up, you know, from a couple years of, of Chapter 90 funds, to be able to go after a good chunk. We were able to actually do that last year, last fall, late summer, early fall. We did a good chunk of Grape Pond Road, from Essex Street all the way to Marble Ridge. And we were also able to do Chestnut Street. As Jim alluded to, our goal was to get both portions of Chestnut Street done. Found out a couple days before, the gas company had gas main to replace, so I had to pull that back. The gas company's all set now, so that the remaining section of Chestnut Street from Longwood to Hillside is in the program for this construction season. So, in addition to that, High Street has been on the list for a long time. You know, it got pushed down because of the new Avalon building, so we kind of held off redoing the road, you know, let the construction be done. But we're happy to say it's happening this year. Actually, the, the sloped granite was delivered Friday, and they're starting May 8th. They're gonna start with insulation of sloped granite, which is gonna be from essentially Prescott Street, all the way tying into the complete streets project with Sutton High-Chadwick. So, we'll have sloped granite on the sidewalk. Once that's installed, they can redo the sidewalk itself, and then ultimately the repaving of the road itself. We also have, I wanted to mention, is a section of Johnson Street, right next to the old common, that's not good. We were able to get that into the program this year also, from Milk Street to Sutton Hill Road. And actually, it ended up, we had extra funds, well, extra quantity for the sloped granite, so we're actually able to put sloped granite per section of the sidewalk in that location also. So, those are the major ones, you know. In addition to that, we do have, you know, portions of Foster Street, Cross Street, Heath Circle, Heath Road, portions of Rosemont Drive, Sullivan, Rosedale, Hewitt. All of that is, is kind of gonna happen, hopefully, this construction season, but it's all rolled in there. Have the money already, all set to go. And then, of course, we have, you know, what we're projecting for FY 2025, if, in the CIP, if things go well in that program, and everything gets approved at town meeting come July 1st, when we, those funds are available, essentially, that'll complete the Grape Pond Road. You know, we have, right now, we're gonna be doing Bonnie Lane to Bradford Street, and again, in the 2025, I have the remainder, which is Osgood to Bonnie Lane, to complete all of Grape Pond Road. And then, we also have, as Jim mentioned, we tried to, where we could, on the side streets, so on Grape Pond Road, I think it's Brentwood, had already been paved a couple of years ago, but Bridle Path was not. So, Bridle Path is in the program. So, Grape Pond Road will be done, Bridle Path, and then Timber, which connects them both. And Country Club Lane was, we did that last year, so, so.
So, everything shown and read on here is in the plan for this construction season?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, yep. And purple is what we actually had done. It's essentially the two sections, the Chestnut and the Grape Pond Road section, that we got done last fall.
Can I ask a, a specific question? And, and we all have our own pet road.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, I have this stretch between Fox Hill and Marble Ridge and Grape Pond. Right. So, I know we've done a good amount of work on, I think, on the side of the drain, so I guess my question is, is there a structural issue with the way that road was built, that it continually falls apart, or is it just really old, or?
Uh, so, it's, it's one of those that was, it was, the cam was kicked down the road, on, on the road itself, on restoration of the road. That is another one, the gas company called me on. It would have been done last fall. I was all set to do it last fall, to tie right into Upwet-Fox Hill, where I, I had done a couple of years ago. Gas company called. They said, "We have gas main to replace in that section." So, that's why I had to pull that section out. We actually met with them a couple of weeks ago, to try and coordinate a little better on our roads program and their program. And I did ask them, I'm like, because I get calls, everyone's like, "You did a great job, and why didn't you finish?" And I'm like, "I know." Everyone's like, "Great job, but why didn't you do this last section?" So, you know, the gas company, they did say, they're supposed to get back to me within, I want to say, within a month or two, because they have, you know, how they split their projects up. So, there's a, a chance, it may not get funded this year, meaning that gas work. So, I essentially told them, I said, "You gotta let me know, because if it's not gonna get funded..." And they, they agreed. They said, "If it's not happening this year, we'll let you know. You go ahead and do it, and we will..." It's one of those that they can push out, that project. So, I said, "Okay, please let me know." So, that's...
Thank you for indulging me.
Absolutely, no worries. Yeah, definitely. So, that's what happened with that section. So...
That's pretty much.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions?
That's all I had.
When you talk about the tree project, that wasn't the Amazon Peak tree project.
No.
Too early.
We haven't even started spending those funds.
Yep.
Just for an FYI to the public, people were asking, "How did they get on the list?" And I said, "Oh, call DPW."
That's fine. They can do that. And we are, you know, from the program, you know, obviously the, the trees that we replanted, that was specific to the gas restoration area, especially contract two, where I had to take down quite a few trees, with the goal of, of replanting. But, yeah, we're, we've started a list, recognizing that we are gonna have funds from the Amazon project coming in the near future, that we can look at. So, we are tracking them on a spreadsheet also. So, yeah, you can send them to the DPW. That's good.
I could probably ask you a question all night, but I'm just gonna ask one.
That's okay.
I think if I can remember what it was. Do you, I assume the answer is yes, but I'd like everybody to understand, do you take into account the amount of traffic on these roads when you are ranking them, like, how well-traveled they are?
You mean as far as prioritizing?
Yes.
We do. And, and that's one of the struggles with the pavement management system, because it has a higher priority when you have higher traffic.
That is, that is a good thing.
It is. The problem is, is when you have roads that'll never get paved, because, and, and so it's really, we're trying to balance.
I understand that.
We really, but, again, Grape Pond Road.
But of course, you get the most complaints about the most traveled roads.
They have a lot of, a lot of defects over the years, so, they are, yeah, higher priority.
So, and I just want to say thank you, because I know you guys have been working really hard and talking individually with residents for the last several years. So, your work is appreciated.
Thank you.
I just have a question on Chestnut Street. So, is that gonna, that whole strip that they were doing the gas work on, from, where's it change? It changes if you're to take that one.
So, the section that, that wasn't done was Longwood to Sutton Hill, that section, which is the worst section. We did the, you know, as you're heading further out, that section was able to get done.
That was, yeah.
It ended up, the only part that the gas company needed to, to impact on Chestnut Street was a section to tie Sutton Hill in, and that was it. So, I expected it to be all of Chestnut. It ended up, it was only that small area. So, you know, and majority of the main work is gonna be on Sutton Hill itself. So, that was the only impact in that area.
And then there's that little section at Andover Street, when you take the right off of Chestnut. See, I asked your question for you.
Thank you.
It's really bad. We do hear a lot about it.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, it is, it is. So, one of the things I'm struggling with is the crosswalks in that area.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Although they're, they're gorgeous, they're beautiful, the, the pavers.
It is a prob- it is a huge problem, yeah.
It's, so, it's, it's one of the things I've, I've brought to, to Jim, and, and my thoughts are that, you know, I know people don't, the old stamped asphalt doesn't look good, but they've come a long way with that. So, my goal is to actually kind of do a, a section, probably one section of Andover, and try one of the crosswalks, you know, to...
Those brick crosswalks are dangerous, downright dangerous.
They are, and they don't, and again, you know, they, these were built correctly, like, this is how you build it. Like, we've actually dug down, and they have the subbase you're supposed to have. I think they even have concrete under that subbase, so they...
Just doesn't hold up to the traffic.
It doesn't.
And the heaping of the frosty.
The traffic, the winter time, you know, so, so I, I know that section's bad. It's one, I do, when we drive around, it's one of these, "What road is this?" I'm like, "Ah, this is not good." I'm like, so, I do know about that section.
I just feel like, the more heavily trafficked roads, if we could fix those, people hear far fewer complaints.
So, no, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yep.
Completely believe in the process.
Yes.
Can I do two more? Because I'm sorry, I don't, I don't...
Two other streets?
You guys have been remarkably, and, and I, despite, and it's, it's the thankless job, you guys do an amazing, amazing job with, with the resources that you have, and we're very much, we really know that, and we're very much aware of that. I, two things, one small, and one more big picture. On the website, pavement management priorities, the link, it's fiscal 17, I think it's up there, so, we talked about that in the past, with the new website, we can get that. I know you don't want to necessarily put forward-thinking stuff out there, but it does ask questions for residents.
And I think we're gonna at least put the, the one year, right?
Yeah, we've been having our internal meetings, we need to update, and, and I should have mentioned that, we, we used to post a five-year, with, you just can't, you just can't beyond a year. I mean, as it is, we'll look at a lot of the roads after the winter and say, "How are we gonna manage another year?" So, but yes, we've been actually been going through. I thought we had updated that.
Yeah.
But, point well taken, we certainly won't.
The one year is attached to the CIP.
Yeah, it's in the CIP. You are right. I've seen that, that 2017, and I'm like, yeah, this needs to get out of here.
It feels like just yesterday, really.
You can change the 17 to 2017.
It was nice, it was pre-inflation, it was great.
Yeah, I know, those numbers look good.
And I guess my last one's, my big-picture question, you know, on your, your $40 million number, right, which is certainly overwhelming when you look at the amount of our budget and every, I mean, if we continue at $1.2 million every year, I mean, is it the equivalent of just paying interest on your credit card, and you're never gonna catch up? And what are other communities able to do? Because we can't be the only ones that are facing this kind of deteriorating infrastructure, right?
Yeah, you're right. It's a, it's a struggle. We're all in the same boat. I, I will tell you, I went, I came from a community that we spent $70 million over 15 years, several bond issues, but that's because they had already had a new high school, they had had, they finished the other things. We have, there are other priorities in town, so you're, and, and as I mentioned, I mean, even if you were to appropriate a million dollars a year, yes, you're gonna make some progress. You, you're always gonna have that backlog. I don't, I don't know that it's practical to catch up. And a lot of that has to do with, we do have a lot of underground utilities, we have a lot of other work, and you will see cuts into new pavement that will deteriorate road quicker. By the same token, there are, I think there are things that we can always do better. We've been looking at doing some temporary patching, possibly buying our own paving box, where we can do, rather than go out and just filling one pothole, you do, maybe, yeah, we have enough house expertise, we could probably do it. It may not be the most efficient work for our guys to do it, as opposed to having a contractor, but it does save funds. So, we're always looking at the, the best and the cheapest way to do these things.
I do have to say, Jim, that having been doing this a while, that figure of 800,000 has been, been there, that I'm aware of, because I was on the finance committee for four and a half years prior to, has been since then. So, we're going back almost 30 years, that that's the same amount of money.
Even less. It was a lot less.
There's a lot less before that, too, yeah.
Maybe the state will come up with some sort of matching, like if the municipality puts an X amount, they'll reward them, but give them some X amount, maybe.
And, and again, we're, we're gonna continue to be aggressive with grants, and, but we've gone a long way. So, I think the most important thing is that we're, we're using our dollars efficiently, and I think that's, that's really our goal. Appreciate it.
Thank you guys for coming. I, it's so important for them to see all the good work you guys are doing. Like, there's so many good projects that are happening this year.
There are.
Just to see Waverly being done, and High Street, and all the gas restoration work. I mean, that, those are hugely impactful to everyone's everyday life, so.
Not to mention all the rain that's stopped the projects.
Well, yeah, I know, and that's the other thing, like...
We've had our share of rain, storms, ice storms.
Yeah, we've had a lot. No, it doesn't, it doesn't snow in there. Thank you so much.
They can't, we already closed up there.
Snow's closed.
Much appreciated.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for indulging my last few questions. Sorry about that.
Absolutely. They were good questions. Well, that's the thing, like, I don't think that we're much different than other communities. Like, you drive through other communities, and they have the same infrastructure problems. It's hard to keep up.
I was just gonna cut it short and say, no, you're on the do-nothing list.
All right, we're gonna move on to new business. We have a public hearing for National Grid. If I could get a motion to open the public hearing. A second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have David Boucher from National Grid.
Good evening, Dave Boucher, National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street, right here in North Andover. We have a customer resident that has a pole that is in front of the driveway on Commonwealth Avenue, has shown on the diagram. We're asking to relocate that pole 1142, approximately 10 feet, in a southwesterly direction, and that would be, give them plenty of room to be able to get in and out of the driveway. It's as simple as that. And if there's any questions, I could try to answer them.
Is the driveway near the, the dead-end street, or near the main road?
It's near Mass Ave. It's a, it's about, I think it's the first, the second house on the left.
Okay, let's just...
Number, number 12, 14, yeah.
That would probably be, yeah, more up in the front.
Does it mean they want this to happen? They asked for this to happen, right, so?
Yep.
I think it's done in a day?
Pardon me?
Done in a day, kind of project?
Oh, I, I don't know if it's done in a day. I can't, I don't know how long it's gonna take them to do the job, as soon as possible.
Yeah.
And then, then we gotta wait for all the other utilities to move, and then telephone will take the old pole away in the end. So, you might have a double pole for a little while, until all the utilities transfer.
Will they be able to get into their driveway at all, if there's a double pole?
It's not gonna make it, the new pole set will not make it worse. It'll only get better once that old pole has gone away. Yeah, yeah.
Is it a new driveway, or is this just something they've dealt with?
I do not know if it, it's been expanded.
Oh.
I mean, I know, I know where you're getting there. It, the pole was set probably when the driveway might not have been that wide.
Been as wide.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Any other questions? Is there any public comment for...? Oh, if you can come up to the podium.
No, I just have a question.
I, yeah, you still have to come up to the podium. We just need your name and address.
My name is Ioanna Miltiado. I'm having, I have a residency in Commonwealth Avenue. I'm in Abbotent. in abandono to these works. I just wanted to ask for when are these works going to be taking place? Number one, how long are they going to be continuing? Are we going to be losing internet? Are we going to be losing electricity? How long is this going to happen? That's it.
Thank you.
Pretty much. I think after Columbia Gas, we're, everybody has questions about works happening in the area, that's why.
There you go.
So, so there is no loss of power. Our internet with, with the new pole, basically, everyone attaches to the new pole. There's no need to lose power. What were the other two questions you had? You had a couple.
When is it gonna happen?
When is the, when are the works going to be taking place? How long are they going to be continuing?
Okay. It'll take place as soon as we get the petition passed, and it goes into scheduling. Now, they could schedule it five days from now, or five weeks from now. Whatever is, whenever we can fit it on the schedule, it's not something that is an emergency. So it's not gonna be a high priority job, but it will get done by us, and then it will go through the, the process of going through the other utilities, getting transferred, as I spoke a little bit earlier on, and then, once all the utilities are done transferring, the telephone company will remove the old pole. Was there a third question, or fourth?
No, but can we be notified, like, at least the residents of that street? Can we be notified that National Grid is going to, going to these works at those dates?
I just need you to come to the microphone, because they can't hear at home.
I'm sorry. I was just asking about whether the residents of Commonwealth Avenue are going to be notified prior to the works? Like, are we going to be receiving a letter, or one day we just see the crews coming down the street?
One day you'll find someone coming down the street.
I see, thank you.
Yeah, we notify customers when there's an outage, but if, as far as our work goes, we don't go, anything that we do, we don't notify the residents. We have a right to work on the poles that we have in place when we need to, we provide police protection for any traffic that's around there, and that will be done in this case, like, as it, as it always is, so. Yeah, I'm not sure that helps you, but I'm not sure why you would, you would need to be notified that we're gonna be changing the pole, but I...
Because obviously, when they...
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry.
Obviously, when the, sorry, obviously, when the crews are coming over, it's a very, it's a narrow street, and there's a problem of parking from both sides of Commonwealth Avenue. I'm just wondering whether people will be able to bring their cars inside in order to park their vehicles if the crews are already working on the pole.
Yes, they'll be able to, they'll make sure that there's a...
That's why usually prior notification is useful.
So, Madam Chair, there is a, under the conditions, notification to the town, seventy-two hours prior to any excavation, so we could certainly put on social media once we get notification from National Grid.
That will be very helpful.
Of course.
Thank you.
The notice also says that the work will be completed between seven AM and three thirty PM, so it'll be restricted to those hours.
Yeah, what are the hours?
Seven AM to three thirty PM.
So there, there you go, it'll be in those hours, the working hours. That notification that you send out, it's a seventy-two hour notification, is that right?
The conditions include that National Grid shall notify public work seventy-two hours prior to any excavation.
Yes, yes, that's what happens. And then hopefully we, after seventy-two hours, are out there the next day, I mean, but depending on emergency situations and weather, it might not be that next day. I mean, it's always changing, and as I said, this is...
Do they do a robo-call to the street?
I'll just put it out on social media, so we'll have to just keep an eye out on our social media, Facebook and Twitter.
And you'll, you'll, you'll have access pedestrian and car access to get in and out of the, the street while we're working. We'll always make sure that that's open for you, so.
Any other public comment? Thank you, David, for coming. I'll take a motion to, or is there any comments from the board? I will take a motion to close. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll move on to the vote to approve the poll petition. I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the joint petition for Massachusetts Electric, doing business as National Grid, Verizon New England Incorporated, to install poles, wires, fixtures, and underground conduits on Commonwealth Avenue, subject to all conditions contained in the order.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again for coming. All right, we'll move on to item C, we have a request from the poet laureate committee to use the town common for the poetry contest. Is Karen Klein here? They do, this is the fourth annual, it's a nice event on the common, it was one of the first ones we did when the restrictions started lifting from COVID. So, any questions or comments about that? Everything seems pretty standard? I'll take a motion.
I'll move the psych board to approve the request for, hold on, I lost track of what the use of the town common from twelve to five on May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, for the fourth annual Ambradri Poetry Contest, with a rain date of June first, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we will move on to a request from Veterans Services for the Memorial Day Ceremony, and Joel LeBlanc is here, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Select Board, Dee, Melissa. Busy, busy person, yeah. We're not building roads, we're building theoretic roads, theoretical roads. Yeah, so we're requesting the same route, Mass Ave, Salem, Salem Street, and then into the second entrance on Ridgewood, yeah, for our, for our parade, which would be outstanding.
Always a well-done event.
Thank you.
I'll move approval.
Oh, so ten AM.
Ten AM.
Ten, ten, oh, so we should assemble at nine forty-five.
Assemble and step.
Yes, yeah, generally, I mean, if you're, if you're on time, you're late. Soldier, me, we try to be there. I'm usually there a half hour early, just because that's the O C D in me. But, but yeah, so...
I don't see a request for good weather.
Yes, yes. Yeah, and I mean, just to, not to take you down the rabbit hole too much on it, but we do, we do have a, a new bronze plaque that's being, in the process of being created for the middle school outside the veterans auditorium there, so we will be looking to do Veterans Day inside, which is something we're usually looking not to do. So that'll be to, to kind of display that and let folks know it's there, so hopefully that's in place well before then.
I know someone who's on, yeah?
All right. I'll move approval for Veterans Services for permission to use Mass Ave and Salem Street for the annual Memorial Day Parade Ceremony from ten to twelve on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, we also have Veterans Services is gonna be sponsoring, did I jump to the podium here?
Yep, you're next.
Field of Honor.
Yep.
And of course, Bob Westcott's here, if anybody has any questions specifically about that.
Happy to have it.
We love the Field of Honor.
Fabulous. Yeah, it's, yeah, it really is. And that will be May twenty-fifth through June fifteenth, right? And the, can you just talk a little bit about how people can sponsor the flags and...
Sure, Bob, did you wanna come up and just speak a little bit?
Good evening, I'm Bob Westcott, from the Exchange Club of Lawrence and the Andovers. This is our sixth year doing the Field of Honor, we're hoping to do it, well, we're doing everything we can to not get stuck with weather, the way we did last year was unfortunate, and there was some sickness involved also that took key people out of the, out of the mix there, right at, after we had extended it. And we are trying to fill the field earlier this year, and we've done mailings and emailings and encouraging smaller level sponsorships, so that people will get some signage advantage for their businesses, but to build a little bit of momentum, pretty much, we've marketed in the past by having the field there, and it's very attractive, but most of the people that drive by it have driven by it for five years, so it, we haven't been as successful, and we do wanna raise money and share it with a number of different veteran, homeless, and other purposes, right in our three communities. So we try to tell everybody it's not just for North Andover, but we couldn't say enough about how cooperative and what a good working relationship we have with departments in North Andover, it's just phenomenal. And so anyway, there aren't quite five hundred flags put up there, but we, we stake it out on Friday night, we, well, we, we grit it out on Friday night, we stake it out on Saturday and put the flags up, and then we start adding tags. But we've upgraded the website, and so hopefully it's gonna be a very successful year, because we raise money, we give it away, that's our charter, we have to do that. But it, it's, the process is not materially different from what you'll see, it's just that we've tried to be more prepared in advance, but be happy to, and it comes down on the, between the fifteenth and the sixteenth, our closing ceremonies will be on the fifteenth of June, and the field is completely removed on the sixteenth, and people can come and collect their flags. We also are offering flags that are folded in triangle with the tag facing wrapped in plastic, which can be mailed to family members and so forth, and that, that was kind of, we got quite a few of those last year, and I, well, I think we'll have more, because not everyone needs that plastic pole, and they may not need a flag to display, but they'd like to have their remembrance, so we've, we've started that folded flag process, and it, it's catching on.
I think you're going to have a banner year, with all, with all the struggles that we're, we're having, you know, here and abroad and everything, I think you'll see a lot of people wanting to display that.
I mean, it's a year to, to declare our patriotism and our love of country, no question.
If not, hopefully this message will remind people, you know, I think I'll do that.
Good.
Thank you so very much.
You're welcome, I've got a couple of copies of the forms.
What was the website for people to go to?
W W W dot X C Lana, L A N A, Lawrence Andover, North Andover.
I will say the website was very easy to use.
Dot org, yeah, and they've improved that process quite a bit. But we're available for questions, Joe can reach us always. Our mailing address is in North Andover, and a lot of North Andover residents, if you know, Mike Souza, the first poet laureate of North Andover, he's our incoming president for next year, and of course Rick Blaine and so forth, many of you know those guys, and Chief Dolan is a, thank God, a very active member of the club, so you can reach us and we're happy to help.
Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
I'll move at the psych board to approve the request from Veterans Services to use the common for the Field of Honor from May twenty-fifth through June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Joe, for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair, you members of the Select Board.
Next, we have a request from Eversource to excavate Sutton Hill and Sutton Place. Do we have anybody? No. Yes? No? No.
This was on last time, right?
It was on last time. I mean, at the gas company, I think we need to table it.
I think I table it, yeah.
Is this delaying service to residents or some way, do we know, or...
I thought it was replacement.
It's replacement.
Yes. I'm pretty sure it's replacement.
Replacement of six-inch bear steel.
Yeah, I mean, I think, we can put, I'll send a letter to them.
Okay. That moves us to a discussion about banner requests, do you wanna...
Yeah, so we, we went through kind of our policy process over the last few months, years, I guess now it's been a year. One of the things that we really didn't talk too much about is how we were gonna handle banners, and we do, I think, have some that are probably going to be coming up soon, for instance, I think the farmer's market is some coming up, and so I think it is something that we need to think about, whether that's kind of handling them like we handle flag requests now, they have to come through the Select Board, and there's no application, do we wanna create a policy about that? So I just think we need to start a discussion on how we want to handle them, because we do know that farmer's market is upon us.
I mean, we should handle it similar to how we did the Black History Month, and they come through us, right?
It just come to us by way of some associate, it could be one of us or an associated committee.
Similar to the use of the common.
Okay. Let me, I'm just gonna, I'm just pulling up our policies as we talk. I believe it's sixteen.
Sixteen, okay.
That's the number that came to my head, too, and I don't know why.
I don't know, I was, I actually went to count, but I didn't get to do that. Do you know?
It's more than that, I don't know why sixteen was in my head, maybe that's just how many Black History Month banners we have.
And I've done banners, too.
Yeah, I might just be thinking of the number of Black History Months we, ones we put up, because that would be mine.
I think it's probably more than that.
I guess where I'm going with that is that, does that afford us, unlike the flag polls, does it afford us the ability to celebrate two things at once, if there's conflicting times, the farmer's, the farmer's market, no, I know, but, but does, because it's, because it's light poles, it's not an either-or discussion, right? Where farmer's market may run all summer, the whole length of farmer's market, stuff's gonna come up in between.
And they, yeah, they often, I mean, the farmer's market is really good about knowing they won't, they don't always go up until July, or whatever the case may be, but that was, as far as I'm concerned, that would be for us to sort out.
So our current language about banners right now, that we did insert in our policy statement, is relatively vague. It just says, "Street banners are currently governed by North Andover zoning by law, chapter one ninety-five, section one ninety-five dash six four, which states that no street banners or signs shall be permitted unless authorized by the Select Board. It is the policy of the town of Andover that its banner-hanging poles located on public ways are on public property or not intended to serve as a forum for free expression by the public, but rather as expressions of official town sentiments," so same language as the flags. Pursuant to a resolution of the Select Board, so again, a resolution, banners displayed in conjunction with official town events or ceremonies may be allowed at the discretion of the Select Board. The town shall require ownership of all banners that it hangs on poles on public ways or on public property. So I think that if the farmer's market wants to display banners, it needs to be in conjunction with some town group or agency.
Yeah, and they, and then the town will take ownership of the banners.
We will own them after that, yes.
So that is essentially identical to the flag policy?
That's what's in our policies right now, yes.
So there are no resident requests, Scott?
There's no resident request allowed, right.
The only thing that I always continue to have concern about, that there's still only so many days in a year and a month, and we cannot grant to everybody, and I just...
But that's for us to sort out then, right? Like, by having this policy, it allows us latitude to, to figure that out. If it's ever a problem, it, it has not ever been, since it was in, I mean...
I don't know that I would say that, but I just get concerned that, that there'll be groups that might just not get the opportunity, and I...
Rose, that was kind of my point, I was asking the question of how many light poles we have, right? Do we have then the ability to, if there is a conflict, to...
I believe it's at least about forty at the old center, depending on where you go.
Right.
But that might be outside of...
Main Street is thirty-two or thirty-three.
Right, so in theory, we could do...
And then it goes down a little, excuse me, I'm sorry, heading towards the superintendent's office, that would be included in that, that forty, it's about forty, I, I can look it up, I have the maps.
And I guess, and those are all governed by this... And I guess those, and those are all governed by this, by this board? Or so even like the, one of like the ones on water streaks, I know, where you hang wreaths as well?
Those also.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, it's the same thing with the wreaths, right? Like, the board sort of has to, they become a, they're sort of a banner, right?
They, they are. They've been up for over 30 years.
I know. I'm just saying, like, they fall under the banner.
That would be the same.
Right, like, I'm just saying, like, they're sort of the same.
Rosemary, is your concern that, that if a group wanted to display a banner, that they wouldn't have time to, you know, to request it from the select board? Was that the concern?
No, that they would be competing.
They can't.
Remember, we're taking away the ability for groups to request anything. It is only at our sole discretion that things will be displayed. It has to be brought to us either by one of us or by a.
Town sanction board.
Town sanction board.
Right, there's no application. It's not a, it's not a forum for free speech. So it has to.
Well, that's, that's the part that, that concerns me, that again, that we, there's so many wonderful worthy causes and worthy days of the year where you celebrate anything from, you know, support for cancer, I mean, there's so many different things.
This is your current policy?
Right, no, I, I understand. I do. But I think that there is a risk that some groups will, can't get in, because, well, they didn't make the cut or whatever. And I just, I do have concerns that it could, you know, present some problems where people are going to be dissatisfied. Well, how come I didn't get picked? Why did that? But the point is that it's not coming from them. It's not their request. I think you're, like, it's not.
But you're, so you're going to tell me that no one from the outside is going to ask you to submit it? That's going to ask you to speak in favor of it?
Maybe they will, absolutely, and we can do that, but it's still not their, it's not a million outside, it's still for us to decide, is what it comes down to in the end. It's like, it's still for us to make a decision about whether to allow it or not. I mean, what's the alternative, not allowing any? That's not great. We want the wreaths. Like, I don't think not allowing any is a good option.
So it says, "Pursuant to a resolution of the select boards, banners displayed in conjunction with official town events or ceremonies may be allowed at the discretion." So it, it can't even just be like a, the way I read this is it can't just be a cause, it has to be some kind of sanctioned event or ceremony.
There has to be an event.
Yeah.
So it needs to be a ceremony with it or a sanction.
Or a town event. That makes sense. I like that.
So that's the way it's written right now. So like, for instance, if we were going to go back to the wreaths, I would say that those are like affiliated with.
The tree lighting.
The tree lighting, right? Or, you know, I think, I think you have to think of it, I think you have to think of it that way, because that's how we drafted it.
Yep.
We were tying it to some kind of official event or ceremony.
And we did that purpose, we did that purposefully.
Right, because we didn't want just have things thrown up constantly.
But wouldn't that, a lot of people want, and there's a lot of work. I mean, it's a lot of work for DPW to get the banners or wreaths or whatever up. It takes days. So then, then you're, how many days are you going to do it for?
Yeah, we definitely need, and that's why it comes back to the board, right? And that's our discretion of how much.
What I'm saying is, even as a ward, we need to be fair to, to our citizenry. And not just say, "Well, we chose the other one," because I think that's just. And we've always, I mean, even when we had a flag policy, we were able to always work that, that was never really, that was never an issue. Like, there was never two people wanting a flag at the same time.
Until the very last one.
I agree with that statement.
There was a big issue with the flag.
Well, I guess, I, I think you just, I didn't agree with you on the flag issue, right? There's one flag pole, right? There's one flag pole, where if we're talking about 40 light poles, it does give us a lot more flexibility if there are overlapping events. Farmer's Market and Fourth of July, for example, something like that, where you could, we could, there's nothing saying that we can't support multiple events at the same time in that regard. So I think that gives us a little, on the banners specifically, I think that gives us a little bit more flexibility.
Well, there is also Main Street, but I think, honestly, you need to, to check with DPW that this is really, it's a lot of work. So we have to be really careful that we're not agreeing to everybody to try to make everybody happy, because it's not.
We don't have the resources.
We don't have the resources, we don't have the manpower. And then you also, sometimes you don't have the weather, and you can't get them up. So I'm just asking everyone just to be careful for what you think seems so easy. I don't think it's easy. I've been doing this for over 30 years.
They're also expensive, too. The banners are very expensive.
They are very expensive, and they continue to go up every year. I would say the banners are probably minimum, probably more, like about $150, it could even be $200, because you have to have the design work built into that price.
So it's not like something that everybody would purchase?
No, and the only banners that have. That's true, because they have to, somebody has, we're not buying banners, right? So they have to be donated to the town. And then after, well, then there's storage, there's poles and brackets that.
Let me ask you a question. What would, what, what would you, in a perfect world, what would you propose as an alternative? I guess I'm, I'm going to, to address it. So that we both keep ourselves out of, out of the trouble we experienced last fall, for starters, but also make sure that everyone's accommodated.
Well, that's a problem. I mean, that's really difficult. I don't, I think that, I don't know. I think it's, I, maybe it's something to, to have a discussion about.
See, I hear your point.
To try to be fair to everybody and say, well, but my cause is worthy, why didn't that get chosen? You know? But because if it's not a town, if there's not a town sanctioned event associated with it, then it's a nonstarter. There's not an option. So there has to be a town sanctioned event in order for them to even be able to be put up.
That's the exact language, town sanctioned event.
It says banners, banners displayed in conjunction with official town events or ceremonies may be allowed at the discretion of the select board.
But we were the ones who sanctioned the events first.
Right.
Right, yes.
What, what's the language regarding sentiment? Is that?
Yeah, so the, it's language, we have the same language as the flag policy. It is the policy of the town of North Andover that its banner-hanging poles located on public ways or on public property are not intended to serve as a forum for free expression by the public, but rather as expressions of official town sentiments.
Okay, and then it goes into, must be attached to it.
And then it says it has to be an event or ceremony. I mean, I don't think it's something we need to solve tonight. I think the question was, how, you know, what does it say? So this is a good refresher on what it says. We don't currently have a request in front of us to even think about or consider, but I think, you know, right now, that's what it says. You have to have an event or ceremony.
If it's, so a sanctioned event, so if the select board has approved a, a use of a public, you know, a, a public way, that, is that our understanding?
Yes.
That, that's us sanctioning an event?
Right, like, last meeting, we approved the Santa Parade and Fourth of July, right? So.
Those are things that still have to come to us through.
In the lighting of the.
A committee of mission.
In the lighting of the menorah. In the lighting of the menorah. I don't think we did that one yet. We only did that thing with festival committee ones.
I don't think we did either, but we've been doing that for years.
Yeah, we have a list of things that.
They have, they have to go.
Sheep sharing, so say they decided they wanted to purchase sheep sharing banners, their event has been sanctioned, they come, they come back to you and say, "We'd like to put these banners up," and both sheep sharing.
Yeah. That's how, that's how I envisioned it when we did it.
That's what the policy does.
And the farmer's market, where we closed the road.
Right, where we closed the road and we used. Well, there is also Main Street that they can use. But the other thing, too, is, and this is something you should probably have a discussion with Jim, is sometimes the weather doesn't cooperate, and next thing you know, you're paying overtime to get stuff done, and that's a big, that's a, can be a big number. Maybe they would just lose a day or two and, you know, wait until the next suitable weather.
We're getting a second tree climber this week, though.
We're wearing our colors. Like, we're, us bringing it forward, it's not something we would push for overtime. I can't imagine asking, like.
If you, if you, if this board decides to open it up and have a lot of activity, you are going to get overtime. If it, you are. If there's rain or snow, and it's got to be up by a certain. We could approve something to say up on this date or the most suitable weather, you know, as the weather.
I mean, I wouldn't, I guess I wouldn't request DPW to work overtime to put banners up in any, really, any.
But then, the only thing I can tell you is, these, these get tied into dates.
But the.
And if it doesn't get up, that's pretty disappointing for whomever put the, put the thought in, in the board's ear. I don't think we'll have people who pay the expense of banners who want them up for only a week, or I don't think any group will come to us, or that's actually not even how it, there's nothing we sanction that would only want their banners up for a week. It's too much, it's too expensive.
It is too expensive.
It's too expensive.
It, it is too expensive, but.
Melissa, can we, so the banners could be basically donated to the town by an outside group.
That's how we envisioned it.
Yeah.
We envisioned that if there was a banner, that we decided that the town was going to hang in conjunction with an event or ceremony, we would take ownership of the banner and it would become the town's.
And then we own them for subsequent years at that point.
Yes, if we decided we wanted to continue on that way. But if some, I, I'm always anxious to put, hang someone else's thing on one of our public poles using our public staff and then have something happen to it, so.
Right, so if we own it, that takes that. But, but years past, we have not had that many banners, actually, that have gone up on the, on the telephone poles or the, the light poles. It started with the 375th. Then we, it was for the millennium, the 2000, and then it started with the 350th, excuse me, then the millennium, but people bought them. We designed them, we put a price on it, people bought them, and our job was to put, put them up, you know, through the town. But there have been years where the weather was just terrible, and you, you want the wreaths up or the celebration for the 350th, the 375th, or the millennium, and yeah, DPW sometimes had to pay overtime. I feel like we could even, as these things come to us and we approve them, we can actually make it, put it as part of the deal that they cannot use overtime to get the.
It has to go.
Yeah. Or they could pay it if they wanted to. I mean, that's the other. Well, but we'd be paying it because it's their town sanctioned. But those are over. The 375th does come to an end, and the millennium came to an end. But they were up, honestly, they were up a year, and they held up back then. The 350th for the whole year, the millennium for the whole year, the 375th, it did, it did don't, it was shorter, because there were other people that wanted it up. But I'm just, I'm just pointing this out, that you do it because it's a celebration? We just don't want it to turn into something that's not celebrated.
Yeah, and I think the hard, the hard line, too, is we don't want to be a town that doesn't do anything, right? Like, we don't want to say, we can't use the poles for anything, no wreaths, no banners, no, we're not going to celebrate anything in town, like, that's hard, too, right? Like, we don't want to.
Yeah, we don't want that.
We don't want to get in that situation, right? We have wonderful events like sheep sharing and tree lighting and farmer's market and all those kinds of things. So I feel like we might be in past, and I hate to move us on, but it's our last meeting, fourth town meeting, we have a lot left on our agenda. So maybe the best thing to do is to kind of put this on the next agenda as like a continuation of a discussion about the policy, and I'm sure the farmer's market is soon, right?
Yes.
Okay. So maybe perhaps a kind of conversation about a concrete banner might be helpful for us to kind of all understand what we're talking about, because when you're thinking about something contextually, it certainly makes it more difficult.
We'll continue on next meeting with that, so we'll just move that to old business. So we'll move on to licensing, because I'm sure there's people here that want to get out of here. I will take a motion to open licensing.
I'll move that the select board acting as licensing commissioners open the meeting of licensing commission.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Over to you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We are now in licensing. First up, we have an application from Milan Patel of Sri Food LLC, doing business as J&amp;M Subs Seafood and Pizza, 69 Main Street, for a common picture and entertainment license. Tell us a little bit about which one, I think we're all know J&amp;M, but.
Thank you very much, yeah. So we are working with the current owner of J&amp;M Subs Seafood and Pizza, so me and my two other partners, we're just going to switch over the ownership, so this, for that reason, we are applying for all the licenses. So in terms of like structure, equipment, activities, like operation-wise, everything will remain same, just changing the ownership.
I'll open it up to the board for any questions.
There's some really good menu items there, so I hope you keep.
Thank you so much. Good to hear that, yeah.
I'll give you one list.
We'll give you some special discount.
Will you be changing the menu? Quite a bit, not that that vote is not contingent on that. As much as we love, we would not do that to you.
Yeah, employees, operations, everything will remain same, just ownership change.
Okay, well, they've got a good model.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, the application is all in order, so I will entertain a motion.
I'll move that the select board acting as licensing commissioners approve the application from Milan Patel of Sri Food LLC, DBA J&amp;M Subs Seafood and Pizza, 69 Main Street, for a common vic and entertainment license.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Next up, item B on our agenda, we have an application from Melissa DiDomenico, or, I'm sorry, Domenico, of the Candy Dish LLC, DBA The Candy Dish, 1820 Turnpike Street, for a change of DBA to Domenico's.
We all could do, could deal with something sweet right about now.
I should have brought some sweets. So if you can believe it, 10 years ago, we started The Candy Dish in my basement of my kitchen, and every year, we've grown and grown and grown. So now, here we are, I just want to now change the name, now that we have, three years ago, I was here doing my liquor, my liquor license, and so now we're expanding to even add cheeses, charcuterie boards, and more European gifts, so it's going to be even bigger and better. So this is just to go from The Candy Dish, same, same chocolates that we know and love, just a little bit more, so now it's going to be Domenico's.
It's better than the candy wine and cheese dish, right?
Candy wine and cheese.
Okay, any questions from board?
No, it's a great product, and we're very happy that you're here in town.
Thank you. I see a lot of familiar faces in my studio.
That's not a royalty point.
Yeah. We'll keep that for sure.
I move, I move that the select board acting as licensing commissioners approve the application from Melissa Domenico of The Candy Dish LLC, DBA The Candy Dish, 1820 Turnpike Street, for a change of DBA to Domenico's.
I have a motion.
Second.
And the second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for waiting.
Yeah, thank you for your patience, being at this point. And with that, I'll entertain another motion.
I move that the select board acting as licensing commissioners close the meeting of the licensing commission.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Back to you.
All right, we'll move on to atkinson items. We have a donation of $8,000 from the Friends of Stevens Memorial Library, and I will take a motion.
I'll move that select board accept the donation from the Friends of Stevens Memorial Library in the amount of $8,000.
I'll second that.
With our thanks. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yay.
We are very grateful to them and all the, that they donate to the library. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're moving on to old business, board and committee liaisons.
All right, I did my best. So everybody has four, except Rosemary, who has five. And two of you are sharing planning board, because that tends to be the biggest one usually. So for affordable housing trust, I have Dave. For CPC, I have Brian. For Concom, I have Dave. For council and aging, I have Janice. And it's attached to your agenda, so you don't have to, I feel like everyone's like frantically, I feel like playing bingo.
Oh, it's not linked to my agenda.
Oh, it's not linking? It's in the updated, most updated.
Okay.
Festival committee, Rosemary. Board of Health, Janice. Historical commission, Rosemary. Library trustees, Janice. Neighborhood conservation district, Rosemary. Old Center Historic District, Brian. Patriotic Observers Committee, Rosemary. Planning board, Janice and Brian. Polit laureate committee, Dave. Sustainability committee, Laura. School committee, Laura. Finance committee, Laura. Those usually go to the chair, finance committee and school committee. Youth and rec council, Laura. Zoning board, Brian. Board of assessors, Rosemary. So like I said, that gave Dave, Brian, Janice, and Laura each four, and Rosemary five.
Probably going to need you to re-meet.
That's okay. For you, Rosemary, it was festival committee, historical commission, neighborhood conservation district, patriotic observance, and board of assessors.
Okay.
I feel like as the night goes on, I need glasses. It's like, you're okay?
No, yeah. Any comments or questions?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Yep, absolutely.
On to warrant article 27. We still haven't taken a position on this.
Right, so this is the trash article. I don't know if there's any residents here for it. So this is the warrant article. I asked Jim to stay, because I didn't know if perhaps you wanted to hear from him a little bit of his concerns about the impact of this article. And so if you remember correctly, this was drafted asking to include about 29 units of condos. We have shared some concerns about the impact of that on our trash budget as a whole, because there are a lot of other condos and townhouses that have come forward over the years interested in having trash pickup. In conversation earlier with some other folks, they mentioned that this is, things like this have come up in the past and been defeated at town meeting. Jim had said it's approximately $200, $300 per household for pickup, and that's just kind of an easy, you want to, we'll have Jim come up. Jim, speak for Jim. I don't need to be in to look with Jim.
Sure, thank you. The $300 is really an average that we use for new houses. So every year, we, you know, we plan on five new houses at $300 apiece. The residents actually did contact me and say, you know, that's a little high for a condo. I mean, we're not talking, you know, a four-bedroom, single-family house. And I, you know, it probably is, it's probably more like $200. But again, when we're budgeting, you have to go with worst-case scenario. Some houses put out a bag or half a bag of trash every week. Other houses put out 10 bags. And then, you know, with the bulky waste, so it really works out to about a ton and a half a year per household. So anywhere between six, and I think I said $8,500. But again, it's, it's really, there's only 27 units there. We actually looked at it, we have 21, almost 2,200 condos in town. We do pick up some of them, because I believe it's village green. Those are actually on accepted public ways. But the vast majority of them, I can tell you, Mill Pond condos, our concern budget-wise is that this will open the request up from, you know, almost 2,000 more condos. And even at $200 a year per condo, that's substantial, so.
And most, if not all, of these condos have it written in their deed or in the planning board approvals that they will not receive trash pickup, the services, right?
The ones we looked at, yes.
This is no different than this. Okay.
Now, the assessor once, I don't, I don't think it's our current assessor, when it gets asked this question, we pay taxes, you know, why isn't on there? And the assessor's response was, we take that into consideration.
Not anymore. I asked him this week.
Oh, you did? Well, maybe it was somebody prior person that said that. So when you say.
I asked Bill this past week, said, you know, when, when you're making your assessments, do you take into account whether or not a unit receives municipal services, whether it's trash or something, whatever it may be? And his answer was, no, we don't. So I said, you know, just let's say this, not that clearly, you know, if we were to vote favorable on this and they were received this, would you expect to see an increase in the valuation? And he said, no. He said, we may see it, because it's all market value-based, he may see, he said, does not see a change in the market value. So his answer was, all things being equal, they're assessed at the same. That's how I read.
It's true. I mean, if you think about it, we don't assess people who don't use the senior center unless, because, you know what I mean? So it's the same kind of metric.
Correct.
Or don't have kids in school.
Because that's what comes down to for me, is they're paying the same taxes and getting less service from the town than the rest of us. That's my feeling. So I'm in favor of the article. And Jim, I'm going to ask you a question about.
Even though their deeds say that they're not to receive those services.
How many, how many times have you read your deed? I understand that, but.
I lived in a condo, we definitely read it.
I, I want to be, I do want to be fair, that these deeds were written 50 years ago for a long time.
It's hard, it's a responsibility of, yeah.
And made a decision at another planning board, and I look at it saying, they're, they're being charged the same taxes as their other resident and not getting the same service. So that's where it kind of comes down to me. But let me ask you a question about, you mentioned that a lot of the ones that you do pick up aren't accepted roads. So getting back to our earlier discussion about trying to improve, you know, block acceptance number of roads, does that then open the door for more of this, where we're, at that point, more obligated to, or no?
We're not obligated.
How are those two tied together, I guess?
Well, you're not obligated to accept anything, but on a condo development such as this, this is more of an internal, we would look at it as a driveway, essentially.
Not an accepted road.
It's not an accepted roadway. Typically, to be accepted, you have to be built to town standards, 24-foot wide, although there are lots of exceptions. And those are planning board regulations, or upgraded there, too. But a lot of, I mean, I've seen condos where it's in the deed where the roadway goes, the property line actually goes to the center line of the roadway. And so that way, you could never have a right-of-way on that, because then you'd actually have to dedicate everybody's property to it.
We have a lot of roads like that.
Yeah, so for instance, like interior roads at Mill Pond could never be accepted because they're not built to width standards.
They're not built to stop. That's not to say they couldn't. Anybody could go before town meeting and recommend their road for acceptance.
But an unaccepted road, is an unaccepted road ineligible for trash pickup?
Typically, yes. Typically, we wouldn't, we try not to go down private ways. So for instance, Matthew Street over on, off of Sutton Street, those are a private way, it was built as a private way, it was dedic, so we don't provide services on unaccepted roadways.
Okay.
That makes sense. And in this particular case, I mean, how would we even control, like, how we're going to pick up the trash? Like, it's not like you're putting it at the end of your driveway, like, they would have to bring it out.
Yeah, I imagine they have a dumpster now. So you'd be looking at 29, or at least, again, it really depends on how many barrels each resident. I don't know that we discussed as to, or what their intent was, if they're going to bring it out to East Water Street, or, yeah, those are details that weren't in the, in the submittal.
Too much not worked out there. That would be a huge burden if the trash trucks had to try to navigate. That is probably not even possible, because they may not even be.
Yeah, I don't think we would recommend.
Well, the trash trucks must get there to get to the dumpster, right?
But those are probably small.
Those are private. Those would be private. But I don't, again, I don't know if they have barrels, I'm just assuming.
Mill Pond has a truck that comes down, but they back into the street. But they do have a truck that picks up the barrels, and then there's little, it's like boxes or sheds that you put the barrels in, that is right at the, right where they pick them up. They pull them out.
The other thing that makes me a little bit nervous is the, is the services for taxpayers' argument, because does this also open up a slippery slope for us with apartment complexes or commercial, which we don't currently pick up, and also pay taxes, some at a commercial rate?
Turns into a big liability.
Commercial, I guess I can make a distinction.
We do pick up some commercial that I grandfathered in.
We do, some commercial.
Mm-hmm, that I grandfathered in on Main Street. Yep.
Okay.
But it's a combination. It's mixed use.
Yeah, I mean, well, some of it.
There's a store on the bottom, there's rentals on top, or rentals throughout the building.
Yes. It's, yeah, most of them are, a lot of them are like doctor's offices, that kind of use, but.
I saw some discussion from years ago that it was related to some of the commercial off of Main Street. They didn't have room for dumpsters. So I think that went into some of the.
That makes a little bit of sense, actually.
Again, this is, you know, things change over time, but that's, I think that was some of the thought process, some of it.
One of the things, guys, we talked about was, you know, that was that a lot of homeowners aren't going to necessarily read the details of a deed prior, prior to purchasing a property. But that being said, most, most home buyers, if they're looking at a condominium, it's pretty clear what, when they're looking at a field on MLS or any other sale, it's usually pretty clear on what the condo fee covers and what they, and what it does. And so I'd say, I'd say the great majority of home buyers would have, you know, would have known that, you know, that if they're paying a condo fee, that it would, you know, it would cover, you know, private, you know.
Yes, even if they didn't read it, you ask those questions when you're buying a condo, because they're important.
Yeah, but it's one of the first questions they ask.
Yeah, the, yeah, great majority of home buyers would have done that due diligence, or at least had the opportunity to know, you know, whether or not it was trash pickup, you know, city, citytown trash pickup, or whether or not it was included in the condo fee. That's pretty common.
Do we get opened up to any kind of precedent liability? Are we, if we say yes to one, are we legally obligated to say yes to others?
I don't think we're legally obligated. I think we'll just have very increased pressure, because there's been others, and Mill Pond is one that I can think of that contacts us bi-annually. So I think that you'll see a lot more once the doors open.
Just not throw around the arbitrary and capricious, you know, standards. If you said yes to one, and it's a similar set of circumstances, then you have a really good argument for, you know, preferential treatment, or, you know, not using the same standard of review.
It would almost have to be a broader article that we accept all of them.
That meant X, Y, Z, you know.
Like, with the funding mechanism.
Jim was actually pretty clear about that before. It should be a much larger conversation than one, it's like spot zoning, right? Like, you don't want to do that. You want to look at things from a much higher level before you make decisions like this.
I mean, typically, if we are going to see a bylaw change like that, we'd always recommend that it also comes with an appropriation.
A cost analysis, too. Like, I would, because if we do say yes to this, I worry about what the cost is. I mean, we obviously don't have enough money for our roads. I can't spend the same trash.
Well, we have to accept more roads.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think if we're, we were going to go down that road, I think we would have to talk about it more broadly, at a policy level.
Yep.
In my opinion, anyway. Because I think you start, oh, and do this one this year, and that one that year, and this one three years from now, and how do you catch up with budgeting as far as trash removal?
So we'll say that in your recommendation, you could say something like that. So if you chose not to recommend, you could say that you're not, you're not favorable because you'd like to have further consideration and look at the community as a whole or something. Like, you are allowed to say why you're not favorable if you wanted to.
Yes, it's certainly not because we don't want them to have.
Right, right. Again, you can kind of, we could craft, you know, why you're not saying yes right now.
I think that'd make me more comfortable, personally.
So would you like to not take a position tonight? Let me draft the statement so that we're not kind of just winging it, and we'll just vote it right before town meeting, but I could send it to everybody in advance, so we know what you're saying? Does that work? Does that work?
I'll go with that for all sources.
How would we vote that before the town meeting?
Oh, we have a meeting right before town meeting. It starts at like 5:30.
Surprise!
Oh, like an actual official?
Like, we're actually officially together at 5:30. We keep.
In the high school.
Yeah, we keep the meeting open through our entire town meeting, in case you need to all run back together to like.
For this purpose?
Yes.
For things like, to tie up loose ends.
Grooving.
And have dinner.
And we eat. Yep.
It's BYOB. Bring your own bag. Not the bottle, the bag.
Okay, so that's the plan?
That's the plan.
Okay.
I'm on it.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim. All right, we'll move on to item C. We've got our Friends of the Memorial Park here to talk about their CPC application.
Hi, I'm Leslie Frazier. I'm here on behalf of the Friends of Patriots Memorial Park, again, and also for the North End of Improvement Society. Our issue is that during 2023 and January of this year, as you know, we had some terrible storms, and there was a lot of damage in the park. We had branches coming down that were six, eight inches across, onto the paths, onto the lawns, onto the sidewalks, and they were dangerous. And so we decided that we needed a professional opinion on, just to evaluate the state of the park, the state of the trees, and then to come up with a plan for us to, to make sure that these hazards were taken care of. So our goal is to still preserve and restore the park to its 1922 Olmsted Brothers' plan as much as we can at this point in time. You don't, at this, you don't replicate that. The plant, some of the plants are no longer available, some you don't want. And so we're trying to do it in keeping with the vision, the Olmsted vision. So that's our goal, to do that. The last restoration was done 30 years ago. So some of those trees are actually aging out and are in trouble. And also, we've had a lot of volunteers that have given donations. They've done a lot of sweat equity, but basically on the shrubs. We haven't dealt with the trees at all. So we asked for CPC funds to take care of the trees that need to be removed, to eliminate it. And they have recommended that, yes, we go ahead with this plan. They were wonderful to work with, and now we have to go to town meeting and make sure that that happens. So I'm hoping that you will all be behind us on this. Mayor Tree will do the work once it's approved and after July 1st, because we have to go into the next fiscal year. And what they will do is to look at structurally damaged trees, inappropriate trees. We have trees there that were never on the plan. They've just come from somewhere, or things that are hazardous to the public. And then we will also be replacing some of those trees. We actually have 12 trees we want to take down, which seems like a lot. Some of them have been on the books with the town for years that they needed to come down. But the town runs out of funds, they don't have the staff to do it. So our idea is to do all this at once and do another major overhaul now and get it in good shape. The CPC funds will not do maintenance, and so they'll take care of the hazards, they'll take care of the new trees, they'll take care of getting rid of the stumps. But there's been a donation to the Improvement Society for the park so that we can use that money to do treatments for insects, for diseases. There's several trees. We've got the Emerald Ash Borner, and one, we've got scale on the beautiful magnolia that's there. The hemlock has the potential for woolly adelgid. So there are many things that are threatening the trees that won't be coming down. So with these funds from the Improvement Society, we'll be able to treat those and treat them in an ongoing manner and get them, nurse them back to health. So that, that's the overall plan. Because bringing 12 trees down is such a major change, and people get very upset about it. We did have a meeting on February 27th with the neighborhood. We invited the garden club because they have given so much energy and money to the park, and the Improvement Society, the same thing. So we, they came to the library, and we basically told them what I'm telling you now, why we're doing this, what our goal is. I told them much more about the history of the park that you all know about already, just to, so that they would be comfortable with what's going on. And when rumors start, they can then have the facts to say, this is why it's being done, so that people will not panic. So that's our idea. I'm hoping we have your approval to go ahead with this, and also that we'll have your endorsement at town meeting for these CPC funds, because we can't do it without them. I don't know if you have any questions?
Any questions? Other than, as you said, this is, we are so lucky to even have this in our town. It is clearly a jewel, and we're in the company with Olmsted, we're in the company of the Emerald Necklace, with so many wonderful, well-known places. And we're really lucky that we're, we're part of that, that group, in a smaller scale, of course. that we're, we're part of that, that group in a smaller scale, of course.
Right.
But it was by Olmsted.
Yeah, it, it was by Olmsted Brothers. Olmsted was dead a hundred years, but, um, the, the sons and, um, the firm was still there. And actually, Henry Vincent Hubbard is the one who designed this park in nineteen twenty-two. He was a student of Olmsted's. And then the restoration we did thirty years ago, Peter Hornbeck, um, took over that restoration, and he was a student of Henry Vincent Hubbard's. So we have a kind, I always feel like we have a direct line down. So, um, there are definitely Olmsted principles there. The park is amazingly intact, um, and that's how it got on the National Register. Phila did all that work in nineteen ninety-five. So, um, we are lucky. It is a gem, and very few people know about the history of it. But, um, the more we spread the word, the better.
The neighborhood truly appreciates it, I can tell you.
It's actually, I'm pleased. So every time one of these projects comes up, I'm so happy that we have CPC, because it allows these sorts of projects to have. There are many others as well, and so it's just so invaluable.
Good.
Can I ask you a question that I've been asked? That, when you replant the trees, are there going to be more mature trees that go back so that it sort of, like, fills that? You know, everybody's concerned about taking twelve trees down.
The sticks, the sticks are wrong.
The, um, trees, well, the, the trees have grown, so you don't take twelve out, twelve mature ones out and put twelve back in. Won't, they won't fit.
Of course.
Um, we have five coming in to replace certain trees that have come out, um, or will be coming out. And, um, they won't be large trees, because smaller trees do better going in the ground, and they catch up faster. You put a twelve-foot tree in, um, versus a six-foot tree, and the six-footer will take better. It's like a little kid growing. And, um, and they will catch up to that twelve-footer very quickly. But they're stronger when you do that. So they look like very little when they go in, but they catch up.
But isn't it about seven years, and then you, at that point, you kind of know that you got a good chance that this tree's going to make it? And it's the wind and things that just make it stronger?
Yeah. The average street tree only lasts seven years.
That's why, that's why they gave you the number seven years. You got to make it to seven normally. I'm teasing, but that's what I've heard, that if you can get to seven,
Yeah.
it's, you're doing okay.
These are pretty protected, and they're away from the plows and the salt and all that. So, um, one tree in particular, it was a hawthorn. It has thorns on it like that. Um, they're lethal, and the, the top half of one came over, off during the January storm on Parkway. It went right onto the path, and, um, somebody would have been killed with that, or definitely severely injured. So there is a new hawthorn without the thorns. So we can do those kinds of things. It'll still be a hawthorn.
Yeah.
And it'll still bloom in the spring.
Not a death trap.
But, but we won't have to worry about the thorns.
The little ones will say, "Do not go to the park."
Don't touch it, yep.
Because they're scared.
Okay. So, Mo, do we have to accept the donation that?
So we will need to accept any donations that they're getting. And additionally, um, just because of the value of this work, it will need to get quotes. So if you want to get in contact with us after town meeting, so we can help you with that process.
Okay.
Just because it's above ten thousand dollars, which is exciting, um, but adds a few kind of hoops we need to jump through in order to make sure it's recorded correctly. So.
Okay, great. We'll be happy to do that.
Great, thank you.
And we've already voted favorable action on CPC, so.
Wonderful.
Just so that everybody knows, these three lovely ladies have been keeping our town beautiful and protecting our jewels for decades. Not that that says anything.
No, no, it's, they really, all of them, and they're a pleasure to work with.
Thank you. It's our pleasure and our honor, actually, to take care of it.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item is to talk about warrant articles, but we have the chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee to talk about, um, MBTA with us and what they've determined.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you. Thank you for your patience, John.
It usually isn't like this.
Tis the season, it's just the time of year.
So, um, again, John Strauss, uh, chairman of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I was asked, um, our, wow. So our committee, um, in our last two meetings, um, just to catch up, uh, we had put it out to the Select Board and Planning Board, um, asking if we, if there was a preference for us to do our evaluation process for, um, the MBTA Communities Act relative to how it would fit into the goals, um, in the master plan. Uh, we got feedback that said, yeah, we, we'd like you to do that. So we went through, completed that recently, um, and put a, uh, report together that, that we, Andrew Shapiro forwarded on to you earlier. Um, I believe, and I'm, I'm going off the top of my head here, but I think we identified eleven strategies, um, that were, of the hundred and three that are applicable to the Communities Act. Um, of those eleven, I believe we said eight. Forward, it had a, had a positive effect on, uh, achieving the goals in the, in the master plan. Um, one of them had a, was actually a negative. Um, it went against it. And two, we rated as neutral. They were applicable. We found them to be neutral, um, with the caveat that if the, um, um, it is, if the act is adopted, there is a potential down the road that those two would become positives. So, uh, but at this time, until, until that actually happens, we, we, we felt it best just to consider those neutral. So, um, and if anyone happens to have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
I think the negative one, John, was, I'm just trying to remember, um, that our master plan wanted us to simplify and have less zoning areas, and we were creating another one?
Correct. It was pretty, it was pretty straightforward, that we were adding another layer rather than taking one away. So that was, that's how we came across that as being a negative.
But not a, yeah, okay.
It did make me smile when I read it.
It made me straight, it made me straight of negative.
Exactly, exactly.
I had the same reaction.
Um, I, 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 and for the record, I, I do want to, again, state that, um, our evaluation process was purely objective. Um, it's just basically yes, no, how does it tie in? Um, we don't have an, we, we, we don't offer an opinion as far as favorable or unfavorable. Uh, we leave that to you. Um, but we just analyze the data, basically, and, and give you what we come as a, as an arithmetic, arithmetic analysis, if you will.
And the moderator will be calling on you at town meeting to make the same presentation.
Okay. I wasn't sure of that.
Found out this morning.
Surprise. Yeah, I mean, we appreciate all your work, um, and that you give us this data. Um, I think it's obviously been an emotionally charged article, again, um, but it is not a production plan. It's a zoning change. Um, it's not a project.
Really a change.
Not going to change.
Well, that's right. Sixteen hundred is really kind of zoned that way anyway, right?
There are, there are a lot of layers of information.
Yeah.
And again, we, we, we took that into consideration when we were, and, you know, it's, it's what is the intended effect here? And that's kind of how we also use that to narrow down which strategies are applicable. So.
I, I found it extremely helpful. Thanks, thanks for putting that together.
You. Please do it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for John?
No.
Very straightforward, clear. Thank you, John.
I was like, who's still with us?
Steve.
Steve.
All right, I gotta, I gotta erase one before Dave gets home. Thank you.
What's the score? I know you've been watching.
Uh, no, nothing, nothing.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the only other warrant articles that we have outstanding are Article seventeen, which is the transfer for the storm. So I am going to ask you to wait until right before town meeting. We actually got, go D, more insurance money back. So right now, we're a little bit under four hundred thousand, which is great, because we thought we were at four fifty. Um, so it's, it's getting smaller. Um, but I just, we're watching kind of the, the deficit numbers, too, so I just don't, I want to, I'd rather just give me a few more days. Um, and then that also leaves, um, the trash bylaw, which Laurie and I are working on, a, um, statement. So we will, uh, address both of those Tuesday night at five thirty somewhere. The office conference room. I'm going to move over right there now.
Go back to the choir room, or your favorite meeting place?
Oh, no.
The Alamo?
The Alamo.
So that takes us out of town meeting. And to the budget. Yes. Okay. Uh, you can ask Steve. Earlier today, I spent, like, twenty minutes trying to make my screen show up there. So hopefully, we don't face that once again right now.
Do you need Jim and John back?
Oh, wait, let's look it. Okay. So it's only up there, and that's fine. I can, I can work with that. Um, okay. So this is, um, a fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five update, just so we all know where we are. We're going to be presenting some version of this again on Wednesday, um, with Finance Committee, but we just wanted to make sure people kind of have an understanding of what's happening with the appropriation deficit in fiscal year twenty-four, and what's happening with having a balanced budget in fiscal year twenty-five. So, um, I just, I want to remind everybody that fiscal year twenty-five budget is not changing, right? The budget that we presented, and that was approved by the School Committee, and recommended by the Select Board, is the budget that we are moving forward with. So what we're ensuring, and what we're addressing today, is ensuring that the fiscal year twenty-five budget is balanced, and that we're on track moving into next year. So just to review the fiscal year twenty-four plan for people at home that have been following, and I've heard a lot of people call it a budget deficit. It's not a budget deficit. It's actually an appropriation deficit. And what that means, a budget deficit means you didn't have enough revenue come in to cover your budget. We have, all the revenue we expected came in. What happened is that we had an appropriation deficit, and they actually called it illegal appropriation deficit. So if we ended the fiscal year twenty-four with this illegal appropriation deficit, what basically would happen is that we would get a double whammy. We both would have that money taken off, out of our free cash going into next year, and additionally, we would have taken on our tax recap. We actually get punished twice. And that's why it's so important that we make sure we end fiscal year twenty-four with no appropriation deficit, and why the reserve transfer was important, why this plan is important, why the specialist stabilization account is important, is because DOR actually does penalize us for ending in a deficit.
A question on that. So you call it appropriation deficit?
Appropriation deficit.
Is that another way of saying a spending deficit?
Yeah, we spent, we spent much.
Okay, so you spent more dollars. We didn't appropriate, but you spent more.
No, but the legal, uh, way they look at it is an illegal appropriation deficit, because the only appropriations we're allowed to go into the red four are storm, snow and ice. So I'm just storm, snow and ice, and then anything DOR approved. So we've been DOR-approved, deficit spending for the obviously the storm. So that's not an appropriation deficit, but this is. So just to review, this is the fiscal year twenty-four plan. I will not walk you through it again, but for the people at home who are worried or concerned, this is the plan, and everything is under control for fiscal year twenty-four. I did kind of want to talk a little bit about where we've come and why I think this is important. So I think part of the, and, and David's seen this slide, so this is no surprise for him, but part of, I think, where we kind of got ourselves into trouble is that we, and the blue is what we've budgeted every year, and the red is what we've actually spent. So if you look historically since fiscal year twenty, we pretty much have been spending the next year's appropriation in the prior year.
This is schools.
This is schools, yes.
This is schools only. This is not we, meaning us.
Just schools.
You're being polite.
Yes.
That's fine. That's a good thing.
We're all, right, we're all one budget in the end of the day.
In the end, yeah.
Um, no, how, right? Because you'd be like, whoa, then nobody came forward in fiscal year twenty-four and said we had an issue, or fiscal year twenty-three, or twenty-two and said we had an issue, or twenty-one and said we had an issue. And that's because we had COVID relief funding. So remember, I told you this happened in twenty-two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten timeframe? There was all kinds of federal relief then, too. We were spending more than our budget was because we had that relief coming in. But what that's led to, as that relief, that funding relief has gone, is a hole in our budget, a structural deficit, because we were relying on all this kind of one-time money that was coming in, and not in a negative way, right? We, we had to hire some of the people we had to hire in order to deal with COVID. We had to buy masks. We had to have reading specialists. But the issue is that as those COVID needs went away, and as that COVID funding went away, our spending didn't decrease. And so that's kind of how we ended up here. Um, and, you know, obviously, if you're following the news, there's many communities that are looking at a chart that is similar to this. But what's where it's really been impactful, and what we're, we're thinking about for fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five, is that fiscal year twenty-four going into fiscal year twenty-five, if you've spent sixty-two million dollars and you're getting sixty-three million dollars in your sustainable budget at Level Service, is three million, then that's really a decrease, right? So, um, that's how we ended up in the situation. And I think it's important to see kind of how we got here. So for fiscal year twenty-five, the School Committee heard this plan, um, last week. We have two plans. We have Plan A and Plan B. Um, this is the preferred plan. So we've got additions on one side of the chart, and we've got reductions on the other side of the chart. So the addition side, we're going to have a Medicaid transfer at May twenty-twenty-five town meeting of two hundred and twenty thousand. So what that basically represents is the funding that has come in from Medicaid so far this year. Um, and so what happens, basically, is that the School Department has a lot of paperwork and forms that they fill out in order to bring in this revenue. It has been going to the general fund and then into free cash. We have not been using it as a revenue source. Historically, there has been years that the School Department has needed this funded, this funding, and a free cash article was done based on what they brought in. Uh, we talked at the Finance Committee about fiscal year twenty-six, how this would be a great revenue source to use for a special education, um, reserve fund, and I still think that. But this year, they'll use two hundred and twenty as a transfer amount. The second item is the opioid settlement fund. So currently, we have about four hundred thousand dollars that have come in through opioid settlement funds. Um, Dee is going to be leading the charge to figure out how we use that money. There is, um, in the determination of lawsuit, a list of items that you can use that money for, and included in those items is school-related employees and programming. So obviously, there's things that they're going to need to be cutting in the health and wellness portion of the world, and this would be a great way to supplement that. And we all know that a great way to keep kids from becoming, um, drug users is by tackling it when they're younger. So we thought that would be a good use of about a hundred thousand dollars of that opioid funding. We know that our homeless reimbursement is going to be increasing by forty thousand dollars based on the data we have now, so that's an additional revenue. And the, um, school administration presented a plan to increase preschool tuition, uh, for a total new revenue source of a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. So that's their additions in revenues. And then we also have, in order to get to a balanced budget, a series of reductions. So they'll be reducing stipends by sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, they believe they can do that based on being, how the current staffing is working. They'll be cutting their IT expenses by forty thousand dollars, and with a plan for us to apply for grants to try to make up that forty thousand dollars. We're going to be offering, pending, uh, meeting with the teachers' union tomorrow, um, a separation incentive program. I'd love to get into more about what that's about, but I think that it's important for us to kind of work that through with the union first. But the funding for that would be the salary reserve. So we have seven hundred thousand dollars in the town's budget that we're, we're holding for the middle school teachers. We know we won't immediately need the middle school teachers this year because we have, um, basic plan where the middle school, uh, teachers will move into the new addition so that we can restore the rest of the building. So it was in this year, but it's not going to be really needed this year. So we'll move that out a year and use that to hopefully fund the separation incentive program, which...
It's a one-time.
It's a one-time money, which is why it's a really good use of these funds. Um, so basically, you're incentivizing people to leave in order to avoid unemployment costs. And then there would be, um, a reduction in positions. That would be positions that people left through the separation incentive program. That's sixteen teaching assistants, five point five teachers, and one admin assistant. Um, so then there's Plan B, and Plan B is if we, um, cannot move forward with the separation incentive program. So the, all of the, um, additions in revenue stay the same, except we would, in a very unfortunate way, use the seven hundred thousand dollar middle school salary reserve to basically break out the layoffs over a two-year period. So half of the layoffs would happen in fiscal year twenty-five, and half layoffs would happen in fiscal year twenty-six. I can explain more about why that. Can explain more about why that is both not ideal, but also necessary if we have to go the layoff route. And then for the reduction side, we would use it to offset. This plan does not address unemployment costs at all. And so what's really important about the incentive and why that is so much more ideal is that municipalities are self-insured for unemployment, which means that when a employee is on unemployment, we don't have unemployment charts like a private company does and we pay out of pocket their person's unemployment payments. And as people, we know, unemployment now, sometimes we see extended for two years. So this plan currently as drafted, Plan B, with the reductions that are laid out, doesn't include that. And really, when you're trying to make up those unemployment costs, you're talking about laying off twice as many people as you would plan to, or finding some other revenue source to pay for that unemployment. So this plan is really less, much less ideal and we're hopeful to go forward with the preferred Plan A. I will say, the preferred Plan A hinges on being able to start rolling that out on May fifteenth. So time is certainly of the essence as we work through that plan. There's been a lot of talk just about per people spending and I just wanted to go and show you kind of where that spending has looked like over the last five years. And I think we all recognize that our per people spending has certainly was low in fiscal year nineteen, but I'm proud of the efforts that we have put forward to bring those up. And I think our percentages are kind of staggering. If you look at, I was thinking about Andover last night, their increase over a two-year period was seven percent for their budget and our increase over a two-year period was thirteen percent. So I think we've really made huge strides in trying to improve our per people spending. But even more importantly, because I don't know that per people spending is always the catch-all for everything, we've really tried to reduce class size and have had great success in that and really invest back in our buildings and our infrastructure and our employees in ways that I don't think we ever have before. So, you know, I'm, I'm proud of the work that we've done to do that. This chart is all straight from, from Desi and it takes a look at the comparative communities that we use. So we use comparative communities across the board for everything we do, right? And when we negotiate contracts, when we're looking at our budgetary spending, this is the communities that we use. And so you can see that we are a little bit below the average, but our percentage increase is the third highest from fiscal year one to fiscal year twenty-three. And there's other communities that really cannot come anywhere near where we've invested. And so, you know, that was nice to see. I mean, you have communities that actually have gone down in their per people spending. And then just moving forward into fiscal year twenty-five and beyond, we are working with the school committee to procure firms to do reviews. I believe they'll be taking some votes on those on Thursdays. We've already received a commitment from the schools to review monthly burn rates and we'll be sharing those with the select board and FinCom. But I'd like to recommend that we think about an MOA between the stakeholders documenting the use of the middle school salary reserve because I think the worst thing that possibly could happen is that we open those classrooms next year and we don't have teachers fall them. It's the one thing that I've heard was a failure for so many different things that we've built. So I think it would be really short-sighted of us to walk away from that plan. And also just the commitments and policy changes that we're making both pre and post review. I think if we put those all in writing and have a great understanding of how we move forward into fiscal year twenty-five, it would benefit everybody as we work together.
Who writes that memorandum of agreement? Is that town council?
Yeah, we would probably have town council kind of draft it. I mean, it could be based on the financial review as well as the operational review that we do. And there might be things they see that they're, they call out that are our best practice that perhaps we're not doing. It could be about our communication. I just think it would be, I think it would be an important part of us kind of working collaboratively moving forward.
Can you go back to the Plan A slide for me if you don't mind?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So I guess on the reductions, the reduction in positions that is inclusive of the separation incentive program or is it separate from?
No, so the hope is that we would see enough people go within the separation incentive program that we would not have to do these layoffs.
Gotcha, okay. So that's essentially the Plan B layoffs is what it would look like.
Yes.
Like they're going to be a wave-up anyway, so I'm trying to let people...
Just not like, okay.
Right, yes. We would like to avoid having new layoffs if we can.
Of course. And then again, a luxury incentive for leaving, yeah.
And I think it's great to have the control in the employees' hands. You may have people who are considering retiring, who want to go back to school, whatever it is, and so now they're able to do that.
A great benefit for some people.
I guess what's frustrating for me, and what'd be frustrating for the average taxpayer in looking at this, is you see, I look at, walk into IT and you find forty thousand dollars. You look at the stipends, we find sixty-five thousand dollars. Someone decides to raise preschool tuitions. I watched the school committee being up to a market rate and before you know it, you're at two hundred and seventy thousand dollars that was there without, it seems to be a heavy lift. And we're in a budget crunch and it took a crisis for us to get to this point. And this is more of a statement than a question because I don't know anyone here is necessarily in a position to answer this. I guess that's what is probably a head-scratcher for, certainly for me and maybe for a lot of other residents.
I think something you could see in the MOA might be something that we do here, right? So annually, we review our Stevens Pond fees. Annually, we review our ambulance fees and we make a determination, do, are we matching what we're doing everywhere else, right? And that could be something that goes into the MOA. Like we'd like you, we'd like to look at your, what you're paying for rental, right? Because is it covering your janitorial costs? I don't know, but probably not, right? So having that looked at every year is a best practice in order to make sure that you're not operating in a way that's actually costing you money.
And how many of these other items might be out there that could, I'm sure, I'm sure in the last month, there's been a lot of creativity and it shows how creative this plan is and I thank you for stepping in to do this.
Happy to help. It's definitely been a great collaboration. And I think, you know, sometimes the review helps because you get that second set of eyes, right? And that second set of eyes is somebody who might just say, you know, what about this? How come you never thought of this? And, you know, and there's just ways to look at things that are helpful. So I think it'll, I think it will be a very positive thing.
You have done a terrific job and showed real, real leadership by just getting in and getting started to get the problem solved. And I think we're all very grateful for what's come out of this building to help the people down the street who, you know, they got... Some of the things came as a surprise. I'm still really upset about the five hundred dollars, the, the transportation cost that like, how do we get that bill when we're covering the child's education? Somebody should be paying it. They're all our kids, but it is what it is. But those are the things that kind of came up and I think surprised so many people. But...
So we don't yet have a fiscal year twenty-four number, per pupil number, but it's fair to say it's going to be inflated because we overspent our budget by three million dollars.
So right, I think the way to think about it...
You get credit for that?
Yeah, I mean, the way to think about it is we...
But I don't want, what I don't want people to see is next year's per pupil to go down because that is a number, whether it's a good number or not to judge by, that is a number that people judge by.
Yeah, so if you think about it, it's probably already overinflated a little bit because we've had ester funds, right? But everybody's is overinflated because of that. So this is a little bit of a different situation, right? If everybody's overinflated and we're comparing against everybody who also got ester funds and we all got ester funds based on our population, that makes sense, right?
It's still sort of, yeah, it's still a level playing field.
I think it's, it's a little bit frustrating because we had a five point five percent increase, so we should see it go up by the five point five percent, right? So it may be a bit skewed. If you think about it, it's a sixty million dollar budget. It's a three million dollar deficit, so you would be off by about five percent.
Well, also the number of pupils changes year to year too.
Well, that's a, it's in our favor, honestly, because it's been declining a little bit. So then you're spending more on each student and that's...
Per pupil spending, that would be based on the school, on the, on the school budget, not these reallocations of appropriations though, right?
So is the actual spending amount?
It's actual.
So it'll be based on their actuals?
Okay, thank you.
I just think we have to be so, we have to be so careful because we have invested a lot of money in our schools over the last few years, very high percentages. And that is the message that we... Four or five years ago, we were way, way, way behind, but we are now much closer to where we need to be. And we've always been committed to continuing to get there. You can't get there overnight, but we've made huge progress and I just hate that people look at one number and it's, it's not going to reflect what is happening this year. And so I think messaging is just super important.
One of the communities stuck out for me, and I, and I won't say which one it is, but they were very low. It's one that sometimes we're often compared to. And, yeah, they've really come up, but they were very low for years.
I mean, there's a lot of reasons to argue why per pupil is not necessarily a good number, but it is what it is, so...
A factor, a factor.
But it's what gets thrown around on Facebook, right?
All the time.
All the time and always goes back to per people spending.
So, and I think as a community, we have shown that we are committed to our schools. I mean, our poor town side, I mean, we haven't increased how much they get DPW for the roads in a long time, so...
It's not just the road. DPW is...
I'm being... Very unfounded, so...
Yeah, DPW, whenever there's an issue, we, it's often get started there.
Melissa, is this the presentation that you're going to give at town meeting?
No. So this is the presentation I'm going to give at the Finance Committee. And the presentation that I plan to give at town meeting is that we have a balanced budget. If there's questions about, and really we're going to talk about what's in that budget because that's what we're presenting, right? We're presenting a budget that's balanced. And so we'll have a full conversation about what's in it. If there's questions about the deficit, I suspect they'll come during the special stabilization article. So I, we certainly will be ready to answer any questions that come up about how we bridge that deficit.
I mean, and one of the other things I think that gives people pause is when you look at, I think there's three columns, right? And it's like what's budgeted or what, what the budget is this year and what it is next year. And there's actually a decrease in that item over, because I think it's actually what was spent this year. I mean, I mean from...
Yeah, so what they're showing you probably is the, they're showing you the actuals.
Yeah, and so I just, again, messaging is key. It looks to someone who's not reading everything that we're cutting the budget, which is not true.
The budget's actually increasing by almost six percent with the seven hundred thousand dollars.
Which is going to really improve our per people spending. If you, I mean, that's actually just, so...
Are you going to talk about like how facilities have gone into shared services or does that not really come in?
No, I have a whole presentation about, it's actually a lot about the facilities budget because, so basically the way I present my budget at town meeting is I go through the revenues and the expenditures and then I go through the highlights and changes. So the highlights and changes really, I, we have almost none. So it's the consolidation of the food card machines. It's the new street climber. And then it's the facilities, which, I mean, as you all remember, there's no increase in budget to do the facilities. We're just allocating money in a different way to try to be more efficient. And so there is a couple of slides on that where I go through the org chart. The new assistant director started today. There was a lot of smiles today. So I'll go through the org chart and then the acting superintendent has a few slides where she talks about the budget moving forward, right? And so we're really not focusing on what we've cut to get here. We're focusing on what we're presenting and how we will work together to meet the needs of the town and school.
Especially because this is about next year's budget and not, yeah.
Right.
Thankfully, we were able to fix a major problem.
I mean, the twenty-four plan may come up talking about special education reserve. And if it does, we'll be prepared to talk about it.
Melissa, can I ask a question? Just kind of, I think going forward and in for, in the interest of transparency, right? So if you look at the municipal budget, we post a whole bunch of information up in the website, in addition to using ClearGov, whether it's the audited financials, salary wages, all stuff. Does the school do the same thing?
No.
They don't have to.
They don't.
So once the money gets allocated at town meeting...
Yeah.
They can pretty much, the superintendent can pretty much spend it the way he wishes.
That being said, though...
That being said, though, I think we're in uncharted waters now. Should we not make some level requirement of transparency?
It's not something we...
It comes from the state house.
It's the state?
So we do, we do include the school positions in our top one hundred wages. We do do that. We prepare that. We're going to work with the school department and the school committee on format for bringing forward their monthly financials that is using a software that we're all familiar with and is a spreadsheet that is basically a report rather than created. So I think that we all will be able to kind of better understand because we're all looking at the same thing, right? We're looking at the same thing on the town side as we are on the school side, which will be important. I think part of the MOA, something we could talk about, is perhaps locking the salaries, encumbering the salaries right in the beginning of the year so we know that they're encumbered at whatever they're supposed to be encumbered at. That's what we do on the town side. We encumber immediately and the salaries are locked and without written permission from me, nobody can transfer from salaries to expenditures. Legally, is that required? No, but it is best practice, right?
We can be better than what is required.
Right, I think it's something that we could, we could talk about in the MOA and I don't know what, you know, and if you want to make a transfer from salaries to expenditures during the year, it's a simple, you know, request. But at least there's documentation right behind it. So if somebody, for instance, let's say, this happened, a perfect example this year, we couldn't, we didn't have the assistant facilities director on. Steve needed money transferred from personnel to expenditures because he needed to hire a consultant to commit into HVAC because we didn't have that person any longer. And so he put the request in writing. I actually only allowed a quarter of it and then I had him come back three more times requesting the other three quarters, probably much to his dismay, but only because I wasn't sure were we going to be able to fill this position. And if we found somebody, we would want to make sure we had money to pay them, right? So is it more work? Yes. Is it kind of a better checks and balances? Yes. So I think that's something that we could easily put in the MOA as a best practice.
But so, again, going back to audited financials of the central office, do they have audited financials at the end of every year and is that something we share publicly?
Yes, they are part of our audit.
They're a part of it, okay.
They're a part of our audit. And actually, this year we have a new auditing firm and that auditing, they were, so it's the same auditing firm we've had, but they were bought out by a new company. And interestingly, just coincidentally, they're actually doing an analysis of all of our processes. And so they'll be doing that here and they're actually doing it at the school side too.
Great.
That's great.
So we'll have actually two different reviews being done, which is nice. So Laurie's excited because they'll be looking at purchasing. They're really excited because they'll be looking at things like encumbrances and making sure that those aren't the things that we can get zinged on in our management letter. And our management letter is something that bond council looks at. So we want to make sure that we're not having the same things recur constantly, like people not getting POs, our invoice not being correctly signed or whatever it is. And that could happen on, on either side, so...
I apologize if I misunderstood that, sorry.
No, you're welcome.
There's a year-end report that goes to the state.
There's a year-end, we do a year-end report.
The schools too, right?
Yep, for the whole thing. It looks not only at our accounts, it actually also does a thorough review of all the federal funds that we take in, as well as all the schools' activity accounts. Activity accounts historically in communities are a place where management letters are often exhibited because there's all kinds of ways that can go wrong. Unfortunately, we haven't had findings yet, but a full review is done of all of those as well.
Again, and I'm sorry that I didn't mention you, Dave, but it is great that you, you're all working together and it's actually coming to, coming to, it has come together from what you've just told us.
Yes.
And that's a good message for the people to hear, that we've got it figured out. We're just going to hopefully enact it at town meeting, so we look forward to support.
One last step at town meeting for fiscal year 24.
And assessment inspections are not a part of this plan, correct?
No, so those are cyclical. You do not have to allow them, you have to, you don't want to...
Just want that on the record.
But yes, that is a cyclical, we actually talked about it, if you were watching fiscal year 24's budget presentation, we actually had a special image appropriation for it. But it is a requirement of the Department of Revenue.
And we talked to the schools about joining, it's, what is it called?
CLARGOV. Yeah, so what I, where the chair and I have been talking about is bringing forward an ABBA application to pay for the two reviews, because we certainly don't want to burden their budget right now with that. And we did just have some money returned to ABBA for an unspent project. So my thought process was that we could also bring CLARGOV forward for them as well as part of that request, because there is enough funding to do that.
And then they would have to work it into their...
And then they could work it into their software budget moving forward. But it's more expensive the first year, because they go through all that data analysis with you. But it's a really nice touch.
It's great.
It's so great.
It really is.
I just have a, I guess, a process question. So the incentive, right? Are you, like, capping it at 16 TA? You know what I'm saying? Like, it's, or like, what if you get like seven teachers and 10 TAs?
That would be okay. So basically, we've done a full analysis of kind of the cost-benefit of employees. And really, the cost, the benefit is that we are having positions that are becoming vacant without having to do a layoff, right? Because the layoffs aren't positive for the community, they're not good for morale, they're not good for our budget. But as we have someone go who vacates service with the community, there are savings that are seen for health deterrence and all the longevity, all different things. And so any position that goes basically could result in a transfer, could result in a new employee being hired at a lower rate. So any employee that decides to take the incentive is a savings.
And I think it's important too, and you guys can correct me, but that we portray or we get the message out to the town that we've got a plan, right? Like that we're going to do what's best for the kids, even though we're reducing staff, that, you know, I don't know. How else to say, it's late.
Yeah.
It's just, you know what I mean? But everybody's going to be like, oh my God, we're getting rid of 20 positions and what's the plan, right? Like my, you know, how many kids are going to get impacted or...
Right, but to that point, we've talked about the fact that there are classrooms that have 15 or 16 students in them.
Nobody's watching at this point anyway.
We have room.
Maybe he's family is...
We have room.
David Brown, 35 Old Farm Road, Chair of the School Committee. Hello. Just a very important point there. You know, so the acting super, the acting superintendent has made it clear that the goal here is to have the absolute minimal impact on student-facing positions. And so the hope and the plan here is to recognize too, our class sizes are pretty good, right? So there is a little room there.
Some of them are really low.
Yeah, really low.
We could, we could expand that without really doing any harm, it would seem.
Still be within your goals, right?
Yeah, so that's one of the points here is to try to minimize any...
We have a little bit of wiggle room.
Right, we do have a little bit of room there. Can I address another point or two? Is that okay? You know, I respect your point of view, Brian, about the, you know, how they quickly came up with, you know, $40,000 IT, but remember that that one, they're trying to cover with a grant, right? So they were looking at what they could do quickly, but could also minimal, you know, have minimal impact. So that was one of the reasons that one was chosen.
Or what's available for grants.
Right, like, in a sense, I think what's really going on there is they're trying to defer, right?
Yeah, I just, again, I look at and say, okay, well, if the grant was available, why would we look for the grant?
It's a fair point.
Why does it take a crisis, I guess is my question.
I guess the other point I wanted to address though was the, Melissa mentioned it, but it kind of got, went past, it went out there very quickly. The point of, one of the points of the review is to look for anything systemic and process-oriented that's broken, right? And that, that's important. And I think, you know, it goes right to the heart of what you guys were getting at before about reporting and keeping track and covering salaries, those sorts of things. Part of our request for this review is to look into those things and suggest, tell us what should we be doing, right? To stop this from recurring, right? Because there must be a process problem here too.
Right, because we can't be, we can't be covering millions of dollars.
Right, so something is broken. The way I put it is something's broken and we need to find out what it is, if it's not obvious. Okay, next, I just wanted to clarify that, because you went past that. You said it, but it went past.
Yeah, and that's why I think the MOA was to be really important, once we get everything back. So we're all just on the same page and we can move together forward with trust and collaboration, which will be good.
And you're very confident in these numbers, and so when you talk about this, the problem has been solved through all of you.
I'm confident in the problem as we understand it today. Now, if it gets bigger, then we'll certainly have to, yes, we'll certainly have to revisit. The fiscal year 25 reduction plan works. The fiscal year 24 plan is a little bit more squishy to me, only because does something happen, right? Like we talked about, do we have a big snowstorm, right? I know it sounds ridiculous, but hey, this has been a year, so anything could happen, right? So today, we're good, but if there's some...
Oh, I understand what you're saying, you're thinking of a snowstorm in May.
But that's what I'm thinking of, right? Some crazy thing happens that I'm like, oh my God, right? So, and that can happen, right? So today, we're good and we have a plan in place, but I can tell you, if something happens, we figure it out. That's just how we have to operate.
That's how, yeah. You do a very good job of that. It's incredible.
You do do a great job and it's great that it's collaborated between...
Absolutely.
The town side, the school side, and the finance committee. Everyone has stepped up and said, we're going to do what's right for the kids and for the town. So all of that is good.
I agree.
Thank you for bringing this to us. And we'll just keep talking about it, March in the March, right?
We do have to just keep talking about it, because I think, yeah, it's important for factual information to get out there.
Because people, there are people out there that don't realize that we've, and I've said to them, we've pretty much got this close to being fixed, and this was a few days ago, and it's, you know, unless they follow it, and they're not going to follow it, there's not opportunities to follow it, like on a weekend or something, there just isn't the opportunities to, so this is really, it's good in that you have confidence in it and we're going to fix it.
And that's why I think the chair and I came tonight to present, even though really, you know, it's not a select board item, and it was presented in front of the school committee and then we're going to present it to the finance committee, because I think the more people hear about it, the more we say it, the more people can understand and buy into it.
And how collaborative it really is.
Which is important, that we're all working together.
Make it work, so...
Thank you. Thanks for sticking with us, Dave.
Oh, sure. Well, I did manage to get some grading done. I mean, the road stuff was interesting, but...
After a while, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Move on to the approval of our April 22nd meeting minutes.
I'll move to the slide where approve the open session minutes of April 22nd.
Second up.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Select board comments or updates or...
Happy Mother's Day.
Yes, Happy Mother's Day.
Forgot about that.
Don't forget it.
Thank you for the reminder. She's not watching now, she's asleep.
You won't, you wouldn't see the stuff all around and all, ooh, it's Father's Day in a couple days.
Town meeting, May 14th.
May 14th, 6:30.
Coming up. We'll be there at 5:30.
5:30.
This is the place to be. Anything else?
No, town manager's report. So just very quickly, I have my attached report. I was going to reiterate that the Department of Revenue is requiring us to do cyclical property inspections, but we already covered that. There is a section of my report that talks about trucks on Bradford Street. Just for people at home who are interested in that, we've received a lot of calls regarding kind of the frequency and speed at which construction tractor-trailers and Amazon delivery trucks are traveling on Bradford Street. We did correspond through the planning, boy director to Amazon, because they actually